Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Planning and Highways Committee. I will hand you over to Joanne to announce the housekeeping arrangements.
Thank you, Chair. In the event of the Fair allowance sounding, please take instruction from Stephen Stewart. The assembly point is at Tudor Square. Please, can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. While ever the meeting is open to the public, photography, video and sound recording of the proceedings is permitted. However, the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission, for example if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information, or in the event that a member of the public participating in the meeting objects to being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Well, my name is Mike Chaplin. I'm a councillor for Southey Ward. As joint Chair of this committee, I am in the Chair today. And I'm now going to ask each member to introduce themselves.
Hello, I'm councillor Nicky Bellfield, councillor for Firth Park Ward.
My name's Mark Whitaker. My name's Mark Whitaker, councillor for Stockbridge and Upper Don.
Good afternoon, my name's councillor Tony Downing and I'm a member from Osborough Ward.
Good afternoon, my name is Janet Redler, I'm the councillor for Stockbridge and Upper Don.
Good morning, good morning. Councillor Brian Homeshaw, I'm the councillor for Brumhill and Sherrevale.
Good afternoon, Marion Elliott, councillor for Gleedless Valley.
Good afternoon, councillor Gary Witherall for Shire Green and Brightside.
Good afternoon, councillor Alan Woodcock, councillor for East Ecclesdale Ward.
Good afternoon, Glynnis Chapman, councillor for Osborough Ward.
Good afternoon, I'm Richard Williams, I'm councillor for Stannington Ward.
Good afternoon, councillor Andrew Sanger, councillor for Forward Ward, here as a substitute for councillor Cliff Woodcraft.
Thank you, Andrew. Can I ask officers to introduce themselves, please? Starting with Dinah.
Good afternoon, I'm Dinah Hope, I'm the Service Manager in Development Management.
Hi, I'm Sarah Hall, I am the manager for the City Centre and Major Projects Team in Development Management.
Hello, I'm Chris Healy, team manager for the South Area Development Management.
Good afternoon, I'm Victoria Clayton, I'm from Legal Services.
Hi, I'm Mark Symonds, Principal Highways Officer for the council.
Thank you, Mark. Hello, Nigat, would you like to introduce yourself?
Nigat Bishara, Netherdred in Sherreward, apologies for late.
Thank you. There is going to be COND 3, and that's for Jacobs Gate, 32 Troutbeck Road. That has been withdrawn and may be heard at a later date. Joanne, do we have apologies for absence?
We've got apologies from councillor Cliff Woodcraft, and as councillor Sanger said, he's here for the substitute. An apology is from Henry Notteg and councillor Homeshaw is here for him. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Item 3 on the agenda is exclusion of press and public, and there are no items that require that to happen. Item 4, declaration of interests. Going to ask whether any members wish to declare an interest in that of any items of business on the agenda, and I will start with myself to say that item 7b, planning application for Chaucer Family Social Club, 100 Chaucer Close, that falls within Southey Ward, the ward I represent. I have not come to a view on that. There's a turn of phrase and I've forgotten it. So I've come here with an open mind, thank you, Victoria. On item 7d, I have had three emails. And they are, I should have had this ready, I apologise. Yeah, they're from Ruth Jones, not the Ruth Jones, I don't think. Paula Saunders, and a joint email, in fact two emails, I had a further one. And they're from Mark and Deborah Rostern. Any more declarations of interest? Mark Whitaker.
Item 7d again is in my ward. I've been careful not to express any opinions. I will be guided by the evidence that is presented, and I come here with an open mind. Thank you.
Janet?
Thank you, Chair. Earlier this year, prior to being appointed to the planning committee, I did express an opinion which has been logged on the planning portal. Therefore, I am here to declare that I will withdraw from the vote and the debate. However, I have asked leave to speak as a member of the public when that item is raised.
Thank you, Janet.
Can I just confirm, Janet, that's for 7d?
Oh, sorry, yes, also for 7d.
Are there any other declarations? No, thank you. Item 5, minutes of the previous meeting, and that's on page 11. Are people happy to confirm that they are correct? Thank you. And are there any matters arising or questions coming from that? No, then we can accept that they're agreed. Thank you, members. Item 7, the applications under various acts and regulations. We have four applications to hear today, and we will start with item 7a, planning application number 24/01500 CHU, and that's at 110 Halesworth Road, Sheffield 13. And that's on page 17 of the agenda. So I'm going to ask Officer Chris Healy to present the report.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, so this is an application at number 110 Halesworth Road, which is in Hansworth. You can see there, it's an application for a change of use from a dwelling house to a children's care home, used Class C3 to Class C2. That's the location of the property, which is a townhouse on the end of a block of four in a relatively modern estate of similar design properties. It's a three-storey property with a garage forming part of the ground floor. There's a driveway, you can't quite see yet, but you will shortly, there's a driveway and small garden to the front, fronting Halesworth Road, and a private rear garden, which is broadly equivalent in size to that of the footprint of the house. You'll see there, to the north, there is an area of open space with a footpath link through it, and that leads down to football pitches of Middlewood Rovers on the bottom side there via Weverley Lane, which is the narrow lane between the curved estate road and the parkway to the north. Yes, so the application is change of use from a house to children's care home, Class C3. There are no physical alterations proposed, not external ones anyway. The only changes proposed are to convert the garage to a staff facility as an office with sleeping arrangements too, within the garage space. But the garage, the appearance of the garage won't change, a wall will be built behind it, that will stay the same. The occupancy of the house is intended to be for up to three children, with two full-time carers at all times on a shift basis, and one, so that's for 24 hours, and with one manager there who is also full-time, but between nine o'clock and five o'clock. Staff changeover would be at seven o'clock in the morning, on working roughly 40, well, not roughly, working 48-hour shifts. So there'll be two carers that are then replaced by another two coming in at seven o'clock on their given morning. That would mean that there's never any more than a maximum of six people in the property at any one time, the maximum depending on the number of children. So I'll just quickly flick through the slides, they're all quite similar in that they show the property within its setting. So this is, the property here is actually obscured by the tree, but that is the block in which it sits. That is the gable wall of the property. The detached garage doesn't belong to this site, it belongs to one of the neighbouring houses. This is a general view of the street scene. So on the bottom left of that, you start to see the open space, so you can see how close that is. Again, it's slightly obscured by the tree here. That shows some evidence of some on-street car parking in this image, which is prevalent throughout the estate. This is looking elsewhere within the estate, typical views. This is the open space to the left with the house, the gable, you can just see the gable of the house there to the right. And that's looking away towards the open space, and the more traditional housing, if you like, forming an extension of Halesworth Road beyond. And then that is a layout of the property. You can see, if you can see on that image, that the first and second floors aren't changing at all, with two bedrooms on the second floor, lounge and kitchen dining area on the first floor, the third bedroom on the back on the ground floor with what was the garage converted to office and staff room. So in policy terms, there is support for the use. It's in a housing area in the Unitary Development Plan. Policy H8 in the UDP promotes such uses, whether in a sustainable location, and where there's sufficient private or public open space available for the users, and requires compliance with policy H14, which gets referenced at committee a lot, which is the range of criteria-based judgements for development in housing areas. And the most relevant ones in this case are amenity, both of existing and future users, and any traffic considerations. There is significant opposition to the application, based predominantly around neighbour impacts, poor quality provision for the occupants, highway impacts, and the fear of crime and antisocial behaviour, both associated with the use, and the impact that any present behaviour of that nature within the estate might have on occupants. From an office point of view, there is no policy objection, indeed there's support in principle for it. We're unable to reasonably state that there's any greater impact on residential amenity, on neighbours' living conditions etcetera, than that of a typical family dwelling under Class C3. Clearly, you can get a reasonably large number of occupants within a family dwelling and with three, four children involved, who are all capable of generating, you know, different levels of noise and activity etcetera. So we don't feel, we can reasonably state that there's a greater level of traffic generation coming from the site, disturbance by the way of noise etcetera. It's not an operational use, so there's no evidence of this particular use having any associated problems with the occupancy, around antisocial behaviour etcetera, and there's no reason why, with good management, that it would be harmful. So on that basis, Chair, we are recommending approval for the application. I do need to draw members' attention to item 1 on the supplementary report, where an additional representation was made on behalf of, I think, all the residents that previously commented, which is in response to a statement that had been prepared by the applicant, in response to some of the representations. And it covered a number of points listed under the headings there, with a brief summary of the concerns, where those points are already specifically covered in the main agenda report. So the concerns around the principle of development, some of the appeal references that were made, in the applicant's statement referred to two children, whereas this case is for three. And there's also a reference there to, or some which is non-planning consideration, which is relating to covenants on the estate. There's reference there to research around antisocial behaviour. Concerns reiterated about car parking and contradictory statements in applicants' documents about how the use would function. And then a number of non-planning considerations that were also raised, Chair. So in general, the matters that were raised in the representation, as I said, were in response to a comment made by the applicant, and they didn't raise any additional points or issues that haven't already been addressed in the main agenda report or in officers' own assessment of the proposals. And then also, sorry Chair, we admitted to make reference to the public sector equality duty in the main agenda report, so there is reference to the equality duty here, largely setting out what that means. And then the final paragraph, well, I suppose it's important to pick out that it deals with people with protected characteristics, and the council's duty as a planning authority to have regard to provisions of that act. And so protected characteristics can be around age, disability, gender, reassignment, pregnancy, maternity, race, religion or belief, sex and sexual orientation. And so people involved in this particular proposal, so it would advance equality of opportunity for a disadvantaged group of young people who share a protected characteristic due to their age, and that requires the council to have regard to the aims of the public sector equality duty. In this case, it'd increase the availability of residential places for young people, and accommodate those in need of care and support in an accessible location, supporting the underlying objectives of a community facility. So as such, we feel it supports the rights of disadvantaged young people in respect to the public sector equality duty. None of that changes our recommendation, Chair, which as I said, is to support the application.
Thank you, Chris. We have two speakers who wish to make representations, one objecting to the proposal and the other in support. So I'm going to ask, is it Mo Bullus to come to the table over there where I'm pointing? And you can have five minutes to get your point of view across. Can you come to the table over here, and you'll be able to switch the microphone on by pressing the, pressing the button to your right?
Got it, thank you. Yeah, my name's actually Steve Bullus, I'm Mo's husband, she's just got a little bit of a feeling of nerves, and asked me if I could come and speak on the behalf of, obviously, ourselves and the 50 or so residents that have put in the objection against this application. I'd first like to start by saying, we've all said we agree there's a need for this sort of property in society, no question. I actually, in a previous company, we supported the Roundabout Charity in Sheffield, which is obviously to, you know, sort of get disadvantaged kids and young people back on their feet and rehome and all the rest of it. So a bit of experience in this, extensive sort of time in the Roundabout, main property down near Abdeel Road. So yeah, when we first saw this application, we were, okay, this is needed, it's, yeah, you know, that's, and then it sort of expected to see a charity behind the application. When we dug a bit deeper, you know, because it was going to affect all of our lives, you then start to piece together a sort of an application which is, well, it doesn't really breed confidence that this is going to be managed properly, and this is the crux of the issue we've got, is the property itself, it's just, it's a convenient property for the applicant because they already own it, it previously lived there, rented it out, a number of people have obviously all been our neighbours, and it's just a convenient property to convert into this, we all suspect it's a financial gain of the business that they're involved in, and that's fine, but it's going to be, we believe, to the detriment of everybody else in this area. The property is actually quite small, when you consider how many people are going to be in here, the adults and the children, with very little outdoor space, all sort of sandwiched in in obviously a modern estate where everybody's, you know, got garden fences, backing onto each other and all the rest of it. And it's hugely concerning, there are 13 children in the direct surrounding properties around this house, and obviously loads more, it is a modern, sort of fairly, sort of young estate, it's just kids everywhere, you've got Middlewood Rovers, football, obviously bringing kids everywhere into that outdoor space, it's been referenced in the planning application. And we've all chosen to live there, and it's great, and our kids go to the local school and all the rest of it. And this frankly is terrifying everybody. We've got autistic children across the street who have just come through another ordeal with an abusive parent, we've had police out over that situation, the MP actually helped resolve that matter, I mean, that was months if not years of a guy who was basically, you know, I don't want to say too much, but being kind, he was a menace, he was also terrorising people, it was horrible. And when all this is sort of taken into consideration, the fact that there's another property of this sort of, this type on, further down on Halesworth Road, where you've got abuse coming out the windows, you've got a television that's been thrown out the window recently, you've had police there comforting neighbours, you've got staff that have been threatened and all sorts of stuff. So this whole statement from the applicant saying there's no evidence that these sorts of properties cause sort of trouble and antisocial behaviour, we're all terrified. And you can see with the response from everybody in this area, young people, old people, people who already got their sort of problems and their lives they're trying to lead, we're just like, we don't really know what to do, as you can tell, I'm by no means an expert in this sort of thing, we're just representing the people, obviously, in our neighbourhood. The company, again, trying to dig into this and do the research and try and make everyone sort of feel better, you look into the company, and if it had been, you know, as I said, charity, Roundabout, Bluebell Wood, something like this, you have a different opinion, they've got the experience, they've got the staffing levels, they've got the ability to cope. What seems to be happening here is, there's a, you know, an application that's going in, it's for financial gain from a private company, and they don't seem to have been at it for very long frankly, there's no footprint of who this company is, it's very difficult to get any details. We're told on the sort of counterstatement to all the sort of objections, that there is another property being successfully run in Sheffield, but we've got no address, no reference to where that actually is, no sort of case study to put us all our mind at ease. It's just a frightening situation, and again, there's a property on Halesworth Road already going through this sort of thing, police involved. There's another one further up into the estate, a flat that's been let out, both of these properties have full-time carers in them, and it doesn't help. And, you know, given the fact that there are other properties, such as further down on Hansworth Road, there's a nursery, it used to be a nursery, is now available, perfect sort of example property, I would think of what I saw at Roundabout, what they used to have, it's in its own grounds, loads of space, it's got loads of green space on the back at High Hazel's Park, it's sort of within residential area, but it wouldn't cause any trouble to anybody, and you go, that's the perfect property to do this. The other thing is, 110 Halesworth Road, to put three, you know, children with potentially troubled backgrounds, three adults, it's an incendiary recipe to be honest, because it's not that big a property, it's on three levels, to have adults living in a garage seems weird and sort of not ideal in terms of, you know, them conducting their work, you know, to, you know, to the standard that's going to be needed with this sort of thing. And, you know, you, sorry, five minutes, and then obviously, you know, you've seen the parking, four vehicles, I think it's actually been acknowledged that will be up to four vehicles, this has a small drive, and then a one little space out from, everything else is all the other residents, and it's, you know, just seems, I appreciate that there's box ticking in planning and everything, and it seems to tick all the boxes, but living in this area and understanding it and all the rest of the points, this is sort of how we see it, that's our, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Bullus. Can I ask the officer to respond to, or should I wait until the, we've had the agent? Okay, I'm going to ask Mike Davis, the agent, to come to the microphone. And you're speaking in favour of this application. And you also will have five minutes to speak.
Thank you, Chair. I just think it's important to try and put some context into care home business now, and I will call it business, because that's what it effectively is, effectively it's been privatised, and we find that there's a lot of companies around now who have provided care to children across the country. There's about 12 million children in England, 400,000, which is about 3%, are in the social care system at any one time, in one variety or another. So in 1980, we had 200, in 2020, there was 80,000 children in care. We contrast that with 2015, there were 69,000 children in care, predicted by 2025, we're looking at 100,000 children in care, which is a 36% increase. So there's a severe shortage of places to house children. The care model has seen a shift from large-scale care homes to smaller homes with a more organic sense of family. Turning to the principle of development, a children's home, Class C2, is an appropriate use in a residential area, which is supported by both national and local planning policy. Children taken into care are there not because of anything they have done, but due to responsible adults not being able to take care of them adequately. Care provision is a safety net to provide looked-after children with role models and a structure in their daily lives. Locating a small children's home in an established residential area helps children to integrate into the community, and neighbours assist in providing further role models for those children in care. It should be remembered that a children's home only requires planning permission as a result of the Devon case, which ruled that children on their own could not form a household. Therefore, if the carers were to reside at a property, the youth would not require planning permission. It should also be noted that it is well established through appeal decisions nationally that two children in a care home do not amount to material change of use. Turning to the specifics of the application, the proposal is a residential use, there's enough to suggest the impact, suggests that the use will impact the amenities of neighbours, and this view is supported by environmental health officers and the officers' report. Any suggestion that children in care are more disruptive or noisy than children who live with their families is simply not supported by any empirical evidence. Clearly, some children have more challenging behaviours than others, but this is the same in a family environment. Therefore, any suggestion that use will impact amenities of existing residents does not stand up to scrutiny. There's also a suggestion that carers will not be present during the night, which is not true either, there will be 24/7 care. Turning to highways, visitors are infrequent to the site, social Turning to highways, visitors are infrequent to the site, social workers once every three months, and office staff inspectors annually. There's suggesting there will be an increase in volume of traffic, simply isn't backed up by facts. There's only three shift changes per week. A family nearby could quite easily have two children, two teenagers with vehicles, as well as parents, with people visiting as well. This would generate considerably more trips than the proposed use. I think the officer's report refers to paragraph one one five of the MPPF, and the need, if you're using highway grounds, then it needs to be, you know, a severe impact on the road network, and I would suggest that this is not a severe impact. The Highway Authority raise no objections either. Turning to other issues, many of the comments relate to the suitability of property to relate to operational considerations, not material planning considerations. Rising antisocial behaviour, as alleged, is not supported again by research or empirical evidence. This is not commercial use, hence why it's a class C two, a class C use, and a C two use is a residential use. In conclusion, this is solely a land use planning matter, and such the main considerations should solely be the impact on resident community and highway safety. There is nothing to suggest an unacceptable impact on either of these matters, and given hundreds of such homes that exist in residential areas up and down the country without issues, it's respectful of the request that a planning committee grant planning permission for this much needed facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Davis. Chris, do you want to come back on any of the points raised?
Just briefly on a couple of them, Chair, I think. Just, I think, to stress that the nature of the applicant isn't a consideration for us here, it's the merits of the use in planning terms. So the applicant's background isn't relevant, whether they're a charity or not, whether they're a business or not, isn't relevant, and it doesn't form part of our consideration. What is relevant is the land use policy situation. And I said at the beginning of my introduction that it was acceptable in policy terms, subject to the impacts on matters such as residential amenity, living conditions, in other words, and things such as traffic generation. The first speaker made reference to the size of the property and having very little outdoor space. But unfortunately, we haven't got a photograph of the rear garden, and that's the best I can do. But you can see there that within the red line, the rear garden area is exactly the same as the other three houses in that block, which are family houses, and that's essentially what this is, in terms of how it would operate or how it's intended to operate. So the size of the external space privately, or, you know, private external space, is adequate for family living, and that's essentially what this is. Equally, there is, as I said and showed earlier, the large area of public open space literally across the road. So we don't feel there are any inadequacies with the property at all for a use of this There was also reference to better premises being available elsewhere or alternative premises, but I just remind members, as with previous cases before committee, our role here is to consider the application that's before us and not whether there is a better site elsewhere or an alternative use of the premises, it's whether this particular use that's being proposed in this property is acceptable. I think that's all I would want to say, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. So I picked up from that that the, the history of the company that would be taking over this site is not a material consideration to this. We're understanding from the application here that the garage front would be converted so that it becomes living accommodation. Is that actually part of the planning application, or can they just go ahead and do that anyway?
Chair, well, if someone was living in it as a normal dwelling, then it's possible for that garage to be converted to a gym or storage area, as many people do use the garages, without the need for any permission. In this particular case, the application is for the change of use. There are no proposals for external alterations as part of that application because the intention is to convert it purely internally.
I see. Okay, I'll throw it open to members' questions, and Glynnis, you're first.
Thank you. Is this application for two or three children then? Because I could only see two bedrooms. Are siblings being prepared to share a room, or?
Chair, it's for up to three children, and there are three bedrooms. Sorry, I've gone the wrong way. There are, on the, so the top three images are existing layout, the bottom three images are proposed layout. And from left to right, it goes ground first and second floor. So the top right hand image is the second floor, which is not supposed to be changed at all, and that's got two en suite bedrooms, both en suite. The third bedroom is the smaller room towards the rear of the bottom left hand image.
So that's behind the garage then?
It's behind the garage. It's currently a bedroom as part of the current layout of the house, it's stay in a bedroom, and that also has a, it's not en suite, but it has a shower and bathroom just the other side of the.
So that one has disabled access, does it?
Yes, yes it does, Chair. You can see from the images that the access is level, that's the adjoining property, but they're all the same.
Thank you. Nickat?
Yeah, can I just ask, maybe I've not actually come across at the age group of the young people, and I think it was mentioned in terms of vulnerable children unsupervised throughout the night after eleven PM. I think, listening to the second speaker, it's twenty four seven care, so maybe that answers that. But it's just reassuring the current residents there, some of the concerns that have been shared in terms of the area already existing high crime rates, and, you know, the reassurance of all of that moving young people into the area who obviously need care and support and everything. I can understand from the residents' perspective, when something of this nature is coming to the area, and just making sure how best are things being put in place to make sure that they are reassured, because there's also an element here, lack of neighbourhood consultation. So just something on that in terms of what's been happening in terms of making sure they are reassured.
Okay, Chair, thank you. The age of the children is seven to eighteen. Yes, there is intended to be twenty four seven care, including, so the shifts are effectively seven until eleven at night, seven in the morning till eleven at night, with an overnight care provision during sleeping hours as well. In terms of the last point, so I think I missed the question around the neighbourhood consultation, but I'll perhaps come back to that. About the crime rates and the fear of crime, et cetera. There's no particular evidence to suggest that this part of the city has any particularly higher crime rate than many other similar parts of the city where such uses are located. As we heard, there's already lots of children in the area, it's a family area, but, you know, all those areas suffer from a degree of antisocial behaviour. And in terms of the use proposed, there's nothing to, you know, kind of convincing evidence that suggests that a use like this is automatically going to result in problems or have problem children involved. Again, you can have problem children within existing estates who aren't cared for or who are supposed to be cared for by parents, et cetera. So there's no kind of basis for, for us in planning terms, to say that the level of activity that's expected to be associated with a use like this would be harmful to the degree that would warrant us to refuse the application. I missed the point on neighbour consultation, I think, your question around that.
There's a section here, one of the, part of the objection is also a lack of, there's concerns raised around lack of neighbourhood consultation on page twenty one. It says other matters.
Yeah, sorry, I see that, Chair. We've had approaching fifty representations from the local area, so that suggests that quite a lot of people know about it, and that the publicity that we carried out as part of the process, which was in line with our guidance, has achieved its aim. I don't know if that is a reference in part, sometimes that's a reference in part to consultation by the applicant as well, but in terms of the council's duty, we've certainly fulfilled that.
My understanding is, just to clarify that, this home with these vulnerable children, you feel from everything that you've done, they are, is the ideal place for it, because it's just trying to answer this and understand the concerns that were raised for it not being ideal for vulnerable children who are at risk or potentially bring risk to the area. Because obviously, I'm not familiar with the area, it's just going by from what is mentioned here and listening to the residents, just making sure that they're not put into a more awkward situation after. But I'm sure you've probably looked into all of this.
Well, Chair, we haven't sort of, we've dealt with the application as proposed and looked at the information that's been supplied, the nature of the use primarily, the nature of the use proposed, and the fact that it's an existing residential area where there will be elements of antisocial behaviour, as there are, as I said, in all areas. But it's a suitable property, it's in an accessible location, as I say, in an existing residential area, and it's residential in character. And there's no reason to suspect that that won't be able to satisfactorily occur alongside a more traditional residential model.
Thank you, Chris. If there are no more questions, I'll throw it open to members' comments. Tony?
Yeah, listening to what everyone has said, both for and against, and I do feel that there is necessity for these places. There are so many children today that are vulnerable, that need looking after, and I would support this application. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, Marianne?
Thank you, Chair. I just firstly want to thank both the speakers who came to make representations, because it's always really useful when people actually come and talk to us in person, and I do completely understand the concerns that the applicant is not a charity, or sadly, the state, but I think the privatisation of care is a wider problem that we're not going to solve here. And, you know, with regard to the change of use, it does seem to be an acceptable use of the land, it's not coming out of residential use. It means that three looked after children can have a proper home in an area with plenty of amenity. So for me, homes like this for children who really need support are much needed and welcomed. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Marianne. Andrew?
Thanks, Chair. I will be supporting the officer's recommendation on this. As Marion has just said, it's always useful hearing from residents and hearing from the developer, but I just go back to the basic principle of this one, this is an acceptable use, that moving from C three, C two is acceptable in this circumstance. I was the executive member for Children's Services when the council moved away from large children's homes, saying that we needed smaller children's homes, and I'm very aware that that was a policy the council adopted and has kept for the last fourteen years. I'm very proud that that policy is still in place, but I do accept that does put a lot of burden on colleagues who sit on planning committee. I, and I have to say, I read the thing about the lawful certificate development and the fact that frankly, the difference between C three and C two for these small, these small homes is very small, and I still believe that the government may change the rules in terms of allowing these sort of changes under lawful certificate development, and we don't have to go through this rigmarole, because we end up in a situation where residents get needlessly concerned about the activities of two, three or four, I mean, in this case for it, up to three, seven to eighteen year olds, who are looked after, who the state, the council has a duty of care over. And I just feel, I'm not convinced that a planning committee is the right forum to make these decisions, but that's the situation we are in, and I say, I've looked at the evidence purely on planning, and from that point of view on, I will be supporting the officer's recommendation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Andy. I'll go to Mark.
Thank you, Chair. We had a site visit yesterday, lovely residential area, very attractive. The idea to me that the community will have, all of the lives of the people in the community will be affected, that the development is terrifying everybody, comes across to me as just slightly unrealistic hyperbole. The children are much better off not being in large institutions. This is the same size as a family residence, the number of occupants are going to be the same as a family residence. I think the children are more likely to be affected by the benign influence of living in a good residential area than those three children terrifying this neighbourhood. Therefore, I'm in favour of the proposal.
Thank you, Mark. If there are no more speakers from members, I'm sorry, I can see some hands going up from people in the audience, but I can't take them now. You've had one speaker, and that was agreed late on in the day. All right, I'm going to come to Richard now.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, it's a bit tricky, as Andy said, but I guess my concerns are really non-planning, and therefore they're not really relevant to this meeting. I'm going to assume.
Well, are they necessary to bring up then?
I'm not going to bring them up. I'm just saying, what I'm saying is, I'm going to assume for my own peace of mind, and probably for this committee's peace of mind, that appropriate authorities have looked into this property as a suitable dwelling for the use it's now being asked to do.
Sorry, I misunderstood where you were going with that. Yes, I would just add something from a past experience of working and doing sleep-in shifts at a probation hostel, where you were working with offenders, which is not the situation here, where you're working with young people who may have come from troubled backgrounds, but not necessarily been in trouble with the law. And a close family member, who has also done many more years of sleep-in shifts than I have, be assured that if the residents are awake, those people expected to do the sleep-in shift will not be asleep, they will be on duty, and they will simply have to catch up with their sleep the following day, and that's the way it works. It's not a lifestyle that suits everyone, and there will be people who'll decide after a while that they're not cut out for doing that kind of work, but there are other people who can embrace it and do it. So those residents will be looked after twenty four hours a day, whatever your views on the application. So I'm now going to. So I'm now going to move to ask members to take a vote. And Nick, yours is sat next to me, so I'm going to ask you first.
For the officer's recommendation, after I listened to all the discussions.
Yes, I vote for the officer's recommendation.
I vote for the recommendation, Chair. Thank you.
For the recommendation, Chair.
Janet?
For the recommendation, Chair.
Brian?
I'm for the recommendation, Chair.
For the recommendation, thank you.
For the recommendation.
For the recommendation, Chair.
For the recommendation, Chair.
For the recommendation, Chair.
For the recommendation, Chair.
That vote has been carried unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Now, before we take 7B, I jumped the gun earlier, and I missed out item six, which is about future site visits. So, is it okay if we can just take that? It's just to confirm that the date of the next site visit will be confirmed in due course, and then we will... Thank you, Chris. And I'll move on to item 7B, Planning Application Number 240158 for Chaucer Family Social Club at 100, Chaucer Close Sheffield S5. And I'm going to ask Sarah Hull to present the report.
Thank you, Chair. This application relates to an existing social club, and it's proposed to convert that social club and extend it to use it as seven apartments within use class C3. This slide shows the red line boundary of the site, and it's located on Chaucer Close, in the central part of the triangular area of land formed within that close. This is the aerial view of the site. To the south of the site is a former church, which has recently been converted to apartments. It's a mixture of one- and two-bedroom apartments totaling 17. The remainder of Chaucer Close is predominantly traditional residential housing. This image shows the corner of the building, so the building is to the left-hand side of the screen, and to the right-hand side of the screen you can see the church, which is the building I've mentioned as being converted into apartments. This is the other side of the building, but also at the front, but further to the left, it just shows the existing building and the landscaping to the front of the site, which is just grassland. This is moving further round the corner, so you've got the edge of the building, some more landscaping predominantly grass, and you can see a couple of trees within the site there as well. And beyond that, you can see the residential properties on Chaucer Close. This image is taken looking at the side of the building with the church beyond. This is an image of some of the housing opposite the sites, a mixture of terraced and semi-detached This is a view from the rear of the site, so we're looking over the car park, which is associated with the church building, towards the rear of the building, and you can just make out the fencing there which forms the site boundary. This is another image taken from the rear. Again, you've got the car parking associated with the church, and you can see the trees which are within the application site to the side there. This is another image of the rear of the church, which shows the relationship between the parking spaces and the rear elevation. And this shows the relationship between the side elevation of the former church building and the application property. And this is just an image of that side elevation taken from a closer angle. This slide shows the proposed site layout, so the light grey is the existing building, which is to be retained, and the darker grey to the north is the proposed extension. There are also eight parking spaces proposed within the curtilage of the site, so there's no parking at present, and eight spaces are proposed, so there's five to the front of the site and three to the side of the site. This slide shows the elevations and floor plans. So, in terms of external alterations, if you look at the top of the screen, the front elevation, the extension is the element of the building to the left, and so it's got pitched roof and a door in the front elevation. And to the rear, there's a rear dorma proposed, and you can see that, the side elevations of that dorma in the side elevation images as well. Other external alterations are fairly modest, but comprise of alterations to existing windows and doors. So, the front elevation, at the moment, those bays of glazing are just windows, but it's proposed to punch doors into the front there, so that each flat is accessed from its own front door. So that would equate to five properties being accessed from the front of the site, and two properties being accessed from the rear, all through their own internal doors. The floor plans are towards the bottom of the screen, and they denote accommodation which is of a good standard in terms of space sizes. So the property is within a housing area, housing is the preferred use within these areas. The proposal will see the efficient reuse of an existing building in a sustainable location. The density of the proposal is 86 dwellings per hectare, which is above the recommendation of our core strategy policy, which is 30 to 50 dwellings per hectare. However, it's the reuse of an existing building in a sustainable location, and given that it's one-bed apartments, the density is higher because of that. And that's considered to be acceptable, given the sustainability of the location and the fact that we're reusing an existing building. Consideration has been given to the loss of the existing social club as a community facility. However, evidence has been submitted, which suggests that it was being unviable to run that social club in that way, and that there are other facilities within walking distance that provide a similar function. In terms of design, the interventions are modest and sympathetic to the original. It's considered that adequate amenity will be provided within the flats themselves. The accommodation meets the space standards set out in the South Yorkshire Residential Design Guide. It doesn't quite meet the nationally described space standards, but looking at the accommodation that's proposed, it is considered that, on balance, they provide adequate sizes of accommodation. Adequate separation distances will be retained between neighbouring properties, so the bulk of the existing building is there, and the relationship is as existing, aside from the side extension, but that sets away from properties to such an extent that it's not considered to be overbearing or overshadowing. In terms of highways, the provision of off-street parking equating to one space per unit with one visitor parking space is considered appropriate, given the size of the accommodation that's been provided, which is predominantly one- and two-bed flats. Two trees are proposed to be removed to the front of the site, so there's three trees at present, the largest of which is, I believe it's a sycamore tree, and that will be retained. And then the two smaller trees are to be removed, and they're removed to provide the parking space. So it's a balance between providing parking for residents and making sure that there's not on-street parking in the area versus those trees which were not considered to be of such a high amenity value that they were worthy of retention. To compensate for their loss, eight trees are proposed to be planted, and that will be secured by condition, I believe that's condition 11. In terms of BNG, there will be a 16% uplift in biodiversity units, and there's a condition which secures additional habitat provision, including bat boxes and bird boxes. There've been a total of 12 letters of representation and a 26 signature petition. The objections are summarised in full in the officer report. The officer recommendation is for approval of the scheme.
Thank you, Sarah. I have one speaker, Paul Bradbury, who is the agent for this development. If you'd like to come to the table. Do you know to press the right button? The button on your right, I should say.
At the bottom, yeah.
And you've got, you have five minutes, or up to five minutes this week.
I'm Paul Bradbury, I'm the developer and the owner. I did the church next to it, I was the builder there. I've got a signed petition myself from all the tenants in the church, over 20 odd people have signed, they're up for what we planned, because the more concerned is what's going to happen to that club in this, because the church was set afire, it was vandalised. And just a few highlights that people have brought up. The crime and the antisocial behaviour, I've got record here from 23 to 24 in that area, the crime has gone down, not up, it's actually gone down. And the drugs and the paraphernalia and things like that, there's been trouble there for many, many years, and it's nothing to do with the church or what's there, it's just the times we live in. As far as other things, I've got letters from White Gates, White House, sorry, Stage and saying that all the church was let out within six weeks, 18, 17 apartments, and there's a great need for affordable rentals. Basically, I've got a letter from the owner of the church, as the car park is only just over half-used, he's happy for a while, there's buildings taking place for us to park, there's work vehicles in there, because most people are on cycles and public transport, so there's plenty of parking in the church. And there's a signed letter here saying that he agrees that we can park in there to cause least disruption to the neighbours. The neighbours, they tried to want the club to stay, I've got a letter from the owner, who warned it before, saying that it's just not viable to keep as a club. They opened a pub within two minutes' walking distance, a family pub, eatery, kids play, and Covid just couldn't keep open. That's basically it. I plan to keep it, I'm not selling it, I'm keeping it to run as part of my pension, so I'll be looking after the premises. So, that's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul Bradbury. All right, I'm gonna, there's no more speakers, so I'm going to throw it open to members' questions. And Nikki, I believe you have one or more?
Thank you, Chair. Good to see that there are extra trees being planted following the removal of the other ones. But one of the comments in the objections that stayed with me was about the development of the church, so the first lot of flats indicated that new trees would be planted, however, no new trees have been planned. Now, I know that's not necessarily something we can consider as a part of our considerations, but this has come up before, that people get frustrated if things haven't been enforced. Is there a way to try and enforce this, and is it true, that accusation as well? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not familiar as to what's happened with regards to the adjacent site and the trees particularly. We can have a look at that and see what's happened, and see if there's any action that we can take about that. But we are looking at this application, and we can't judge what's going to happen with this one on the basis of what's happened somewhere else. We have got a condition requiring eight trees to be planted, and we would expect that to happen, and that condition could be enforced if there were problems with that in the future.
Thank you, Nikki. Are there any more questions? Brian?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair. On the landscaping, I was wondering whether it's possible to have a hedgerow as one of the conditions? And the reason I say that is from, if we can go back to one of the slides, if possible, I don't know who's in charge of the slides. So if you move where you can see the car park, yeah, similar view to that one, I think it might be the next slide. No, keep going. I think this, possibly this one or maybe the next one? Okay. Right, it's a view across the car park to the building, to the side of the building. Now, I think we've, it was further back. That's probably your best shot. So what I'm saying here is that where we've got the windows of the apartments, they'd be looking out across the car park, and it would be directly onto the cars. Now, the answer to it has been a tall hardwood fence. Now, in exchange for that, you could have the existing fencing which exists now and grow a hedge up there, so that eventually you would have a much softer landscape look out of your windows onto the car park. So I was wondering whether that was possible. It would also add to biodiversity net gain as well.
Thank you for that.
More sparrows in the hedge, I take it. Sarah?
Thank you for that. So we've got a condition about hard and soft landscape scheme, and a condition about boundary treatment. In reality, I'm not convinced that a hedge would thrive in that position, because if you look at, and I'm going to try and find a photograph, if you look at this, it's all very hard-surfaced, so to plant a hedge there, I'm not sure how successful that would be. And I'm not really sure it's necessary, given that we've got a BNG uplift, we will be having trees planted, and so I'm not convinced that that's entirely necessary.
Okay. I understand that, but I would not enjoy looking out onto a straight, onto a hardwood fence. So, you know, as the alternative, I think that is a much better one, even if it might involve digging up some of the land in front and replacing that gravel, for example.
I believe that will be outside of the applicant's ownership, because the boundary fence is the other side of the gravel, I believe. Nevertheless, it will be up to the people who decide to live there as to whether they think it's appropriate to be looking out onto whatever boundary treatment is put in place there.
Marianne?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the visit yesterday as well, it was really useful. Just following up on BNG, so the, at page 48, can you just clarify, because it says, at one point it says three trees, and one point it says two to be felled. I think when we spoke yesterday, you said it was definitely just the two cherry trees, is that right? Just checking the report, just to make sure.
Which paragraph going down is that?
Well, at page 49, the first paragraph it says the loss of three trees, and then the next paragraph it says two in total.
Yeah.
We looked at three, and you said those two would be felled, but not the one on the left, not the mature sycamore, I think, was it? The plan, that is an error, so one says three and one says two, so I apologise that that wasn't picked up. But the plans show two, so if we go to the layout. So, it's very hard to see, I appreciate from the screen and from that distance, but there's a circle sort of to the side, that's a full circle, which is a tree to be retained, and then there's some lighter dashed lines which indicates trees to be removed, and there's two of those dashed lines which indicates two to be removed, and there's the one to be retained. And we will be conditioning this as part of the approved plans, so that would be the drawing that is approved. Great, thank you. And, I mean, I know that obviously they're undertaking to increase the land from a biodiversity perspective to 16%, which is more than the required 10, so that's good, but there are conditions here that I've noticed. Are we in a position to sort of discuss those more? Because I think we've had quite long discussions before, haven't we, about how many swift boxes, for example, are needed? And on here, it doesn't actually have a number, so is that something we need to do now to actually, you know, just put some... actually, you know, just put some numbers to those things?
So the condition says boxes, which is more than one. And I think aside from that, we wouldn't want to be too prescriptive really, so I think the condition is sufficient really to provide multiple boxes, and the detail of that will come through as part of the discharge conditions application.
Okay, thanks. Can I just ask one more question? So, no, this is about the density really, because we know from a land use perspective, the proposed change to use of seven dwellings is in line with the planning policies, but it's higher density than recommended. So do we know why the applicants chosen to build mainly one-bed apartments? I mean, is there a particular need for one-beds in the area? Wouldn't two- or three-bed homes be more suitable in a residential area?
So the proposal is for two two-bed apartments and five one-bed apartments, so there is a mix there. In terms of our policies, for anything over sixty units, we require a mix, so that no more than fifty percent of units is any one type, but obviously this doesn't meet that trigger by quite a long way. We're just assessing the application as it is being submitted, so we can't prescribe what comes forward, all we can do is assess as to whether it's appropriate and whether it meets policies. And in this instance, it's considered that it does. Obviously, the density is slightly higher than set out in the core strategy policies, but we're looking at the proposal in terms of the fact that, sorry, that policy does allow exceptions to density as well, it's not, you know, this has to be this density. And when it's smaller units, the density obviously jumps up because you're getting more units. But it's considered that it's the efficient reuse of an existing building, it's in a sustainable location, it's a brownfield site, and we've not got a four-year housing loan supply as well, so the tilt of balance is in play on this application. So for those reasons, it's considered that the type of units and the density is acceptable.
If I can just reassure Mary Ann that only four hundred yards away, the Sheffield Housing Company are building family-sized homes on Mansell Road and Mansell Crescent. There's also recently been development off Buchanan Road on, I forget the name of it, they've given it a new name, the road off it, which has also got some family-sized homes. That's also only about four hundred yards away. And before that, we had the Parsons Greens development, which was a lot larger. So Southie is actually being filled up quite a lot with family-sized homes in recent years. Can I come on to Richard?
Thank you, Chair. Three questions, if I may. Firstly, the apartments, are they, do they comply with the minimum size requirements of our regulations?
So they meet South Yorkshire Residential Design Guide standards, some of them meet the nationally described space standards, but not all of them, but they're not a million miles away.
Okay, thank you. Secondly, in a development like this, would there be an expectation for the developer to provide at least one electric vehicle charging point, or would that be down to individual tenants?
We don't have a policy on that at the moment, so we can't insist on it. Building regs do have requirements for electric vehicle charging points, so it could potentially fall under that legislation.
Would it be possible to, they used to call it informatives, I don't know what they call them now, to ask the developers to consider putting in an electric vehicle charging point as part of the development? Give them a gentle nudge?
I think, given that we've not got any policy and given that it's probably covered under building regs, I'm not sure that that's really necessary in this case.
Thank you. And finally, I notice in condition twelve, it talks about shower room window and the condition of having obscure glass to a minimum standard of level four. It doesn't say anything about whether that window can be opened or not. Now, it's a shower, I guess people like to open windows in showers, but could we put some form of extra detail requirement that could then be opened at the top bit? Thank you.
So let me show you where the window is. So it's in this gap between the two properties here. And the closest window in the church is a very small window, and it's a secondary window, I believe, to a bedroom. And then if we look on this site plan, the, on here, the bathroom window is towards the front, so the bottom, the floor plan, the bottom of the screen, on the left-hand side, it's towards the front. So there is a separation distance of approximately two metres between those properties. The obscure glazing would obviously prevent overlooking. I think we could probably justify adding that non-opening above one point seven metres, is that what you were referring to?
Yeah, I think it's unreasonable to not have a, in a shower room, because there's going to be a lot of steam, you can't pull it out with a fan. So the window should be open, but if you could do it at the top, a bit like the ones on those pictures earlier.
I think what Richard is getting at is a window that would open out so that...
Just at the top?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yes, if you want to propose that.
I would say it's essential, knowing the way bathrooms and showers can steam up, and you can get problems with mould developing.
Yeah, I think we'd be happy to change the condition to include that, but I think you need to propose it, it needs to be seconded as well.
I will second your proposal, Richard.
Right, we'll add that on then.
Sorry, yeah, thank you, Chair. If you've got a motion on the floor that's being proposed and seconded, you need to vote on it. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favour of...
Sorry, can I just clarify what we're saying? So is it that only the top of the window should open?
Should open from the top, so it would open out like that.
Right, so a window opens out, would sort it out.
Chair, can you just clarify that this is an amendment to condition twelve, and ask that the final wording of the amended condition is agreed with yourself and the other co-chair, just so we can get that right after the event, if it's passed, obviously. Thank you, Chair.
That sounds reasonable to me. Yeah? There is a nodding of heads. Can we now proceed to a vote? Okay. All those in favour of the proposal as put by Richard? That seems to be unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for spotting that, Richard. It does occur to me, going back to the electrical charging points, is that if they put in a commercial one, then it's, because obviously it's got to be shared, then you, then provided they've got the appropriate credit card, then they can just swipe against the device and they can, they can charge up by however much. And if the applicant needs a small fee to be reimbursed for installing it, that would be, that should be workable. Might be worth thinking about, I'm not going to propose it as a condition, but the applicant might want to think that might be, given the way vehicles are going in the future. So, we've had members' questions, ah, Brian has come back for another one.
One more, if you'll allow me, Chair. So, I've referred to the wooden fencing, I've actually found the photograph which identifies how close to the windows it would be. So if we could go back to the slides again.
Page twenty-six.
Page twenty-six. God.
That's the one.
Yes. So this one demonstrates what I think is probably about two to three feet away from the windows, which I believe are staying in the same place. And it would be a tall, from what I understand from the site visit, would be a tall, maybe six-foot tall wooden fence that you'd be looking out on. So, I mean, my request is that the developer looks at what will be put in that position, because any residence would not really want to be looking out onto that. And that's just my request then, if we don't want to go for a condition.
Sorry, that yellow line in front there, that's the boundary, so I could put a hedge row in there.
No, it's your hedge.
The tarmac ends and it's yellow stone, but it's possible for me to put a hedge row in. So I don't agree that looking out on the beach, it won't look very good.
Thank you very much, it would be very close, and I understand, you know, the financial disincentive in terms of digging up some tarmac. But thank you for considering it.
Thank you. So I'm not convinced it's necessary to make the development acceptable. However, given that the applicant has suggested that there's some scope to do it and that he would be willing to look into that, perhaps we could amend the condition to, the condition does require a means of a suitable site boundary treatment, and perhaps that could be varied to include consideration of landscaping, just so that it is considered, to see if it's appropriate or not.
Is that acceptable?
If the member wants to propose and second the amendment of that condition in that manner and then vote on it, then yes.
Yeah, could you repeat that again, Sarah?
So, condition seven requires details of a suitable means of site boundary treatment. So within that, we could just put details of a suitable means of site boundary treatment or alternative landscaping scheme, something to that effect, shall be submitted to and approved in writing, so that consideration is given to that. However, if it came in and it wasn't, it couldn't be done, I think we would then have the, we would then be able to revert back to offence if that was the option that was put forward.
So the options there are that it goes, it comes to you as a proposal, or that we go with actually putting in a hedge, and that's there within it? That's the two options that you're laying out there, I believe?
Yes, so it's basically requesting further details of that boundary treatment and emphasizing that a hedge should be considered there, essentially.
I think that a hedge should be considered, it's far enough for me, I'd be happy with that.
Is anyone happy to second that proposal? If not, I would, thank you, Gary.
Sorry, yeah, I'm happy to second that, that there will be a consideration in favour of a hedge row. And can I just make a further point as well, because there is a commitment to hedgehogs, and I think when you're thinking about hedgehog highways, you need to allow them to pass three freely through the garden area. So if there are fences around the perimeter, you need to make sure there's access to hedgehogs. So the best option is a hedge row, so that would also, you know, be hitting that BNG mark as well. Thank you.
It is effectively an island, though, that building and the former church, so the, but, I mean, cars do not speed along there at fifty miles an hour, because there's too many bends in the road to do that. So I would hope that in going further afield, the hedgehogs could make the transition to other areas.
So I think the request was for a seconder?
Yeah. Okay, so...
Chair, you've got a proposal that's been seconded now, so that also needs voting on. Thank you, Chair.
Members like to tell whether they're in favour of this proposal, please raise your hands. That's also unanimously carried. Okay. Can we now move to members' comments on this? Mark?
I'd just like to say that when we went to look at it, the church has been very tastefully redeveloped. It looks smart, in good condition, unlike this building that's in front of it that we're talking about now. I think it would be an extremely good thing for this building to be brought up to a standard so that it doesn't reflect badly on the church beside it. If it was looking something similar to the church, I know it's not exactly the same sort of building, but if it was looking better than it is, then it would reflect very well on the community. It would be a visual asset to the community. And there is clearly a demand for affordable rentals of this sort of size. And considering that the building in question has clearly failed as a business, and it's therefore a brownfield site as well, it seems to me that this is a very good idea to redevelop it in this way, so I will be in favour of the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I'm just going to make a couple of comments, because I, go on, Brian, you first.
No, my comment was very straightforward in that, you know, there are a few qualms about density, but actually, this is an area of relatively low density, and I think the benefit of, how many have we got, was it seventeen? New residents will be absolutely obvious, so that was my comment.
Thank you for that, Brian. When I read the report first time round, and read on page forty-three that the area had a high-frequency bus service, I spat out some feathers. There's a thirty-one and thirty-two that do not run in the evenings, and they only run hourly. The eighty-six bus service reduces to a two-hourly service in the evenings. But in fairness to that, there is the number twenty, which you can pick up from Asda, there's the number seven and the number eight that run along Wordsworth Avenue, which is probably about four hundred yards away. So there are a lot of buses, but you have to go to different bus stops to reach them, which is the downside. And the other thing is that on the, there's no doubt that it was the generous George that must have taken the trade away from the Chaucer Close Social Club, that being the very nearest public house. The Fox and Hounds is somewhat further away, on Fox Hill Road, and also has a bit of a chequered history, if we're honest, but I won't go into detail. For working men's clubs, where you do have to pay a fee to join, as at least one member here will know, there's, as well as the Colley Club, there is also the, what's the bridge working men's club. But I have to say that at the bottom of page, sorry, that the Wordsworth Tavern, there is now an application in for that to be converted to a care home. Obviously, at the time Sarah was drafting the report, she was not aware of that, because that application has only just come in. But those are details, and I have to say, given all the other aspects around this development, I have to say I'm in favour of it, and I do think it will serve the community well, would lead to a lot less trouble than the social club has had over the years. And I think, as the applicants have said, this has become a much more quiet area. Certainly, when I was first on council, I was aware of some problems, and I was also aware of problems with the church next door and people breaking into that. And so that development has meant that you're not getting break-ins there and associated troubles. So I think that is all to the good. One place where you could have had some swift, swift bricks would have been that church if, um, if only we had been aware of it at the time. Um, but I wasn't on planning committee when, or I wasn't there for the meeting when that came up. But that would be a lovely building to have lots of swift bricks in, um, and the birds would have appreciated the height as well away from people. But this is the application in front of us, Chaucer Close, so I'm going to ask for a vote on it. And so I will go to, to Nick Appen first.
Um, I support the proposal, Chair.
Nikki?
Yes, I support the proposal, Chair.
Mark?
I support the proposal, Chair.
Tony?
For Chair.
Janet?
Support the proposal, Chair.
Brian?
I support the officer's recommendation, Chair.
Mary Ann?
I support the proposal, thank you.
Gary?
Yeah, supported, Chair.
Alan?
Support the officer's recommendation, Chair.
Lynas?
Support the recommendation, Chair.
Richard?
Yeah, I support the recommendation.
And Andrew? For the officer's recommendation. That is unanimously carried. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Sarah. I'm gonna propose that, I don't think the next one is gonna take too long, but I'm gonna propose a comfort break before we take item seven Ds. So if we can move on to, uh, item seven C and Dinah can take us through the report.
Thank you, Chair. So this application relates to a vacant plot between numbers ninety-four and ninety-eight Wheel Lane in Grennyside. Some members will recall that the site has quite a long history, which culminated in planning permission being granted, subject to conditions, in October twenty-twenty-three for the erection of two dwelling houses. Condition two of the permission defines the list of approved plans. Conditions eight and nine secure the setting back of the front boundary wall to form a two-metre wide footway along the site frontage. This application seeks consent under section seventy-three of the Town and Country Planning Act to remove conditions eight and nine, thereby removing the requirement to set back the front boundary wall, and to vary condition two, the list of approved plans, to reflect the wall being retained in its existing place, plus the addition of an air conditioning unit within each plot. So if you're not, well, this is, this is the site on Wheel Lane, south side of Wheel Lane, between numbers ninety-four and ninety-eight. Here's an aerial view of the same plot, showing the redline boundary, uh, field and greenbelt to the south. Next few slides show the extent of the existing stone boundary wall, uh, from east to west. I go through them slowly. This is the eastern, eastern side of the site, looking towards the western side. You can just make out the vehicle entrance on the right-hand side of the photograph. That's a closer view of the vehicle entrance with the splays to either side. And you can see, um, the width of the footway there. It does narrow in this position. And finally, we've got a slide which shows the amended, uh, site plan with the retained wall and, um, air conditioning units next to the already approved air source heat pumps. So in May this year, the applicant submitted an appeal to the planning inspectorate, challenging the need for condition eight. The appeal was allowed, with the inspector concluding that the condition was neither necessary nor reasonable, and that the limited benefit to the relocation of the wall is outweighed by the negative aspects, and the planning permission is not dependent on the move of the wall to be acceptable. Following the applicant's successful appeal, they can now implement their permission without having to set back the front boundary wall. So this application seeks to remove conditions eight and nine, and to vary condition two, in part to align with the appeal decision, but also to allow the installation of the two air conditioning units. In reaching his conclusions, the inspector took into account the varied width of the footway along Wheel Lane, the alternative footpath provision on the northern side of the road, and highway officers view that while setting back the wall might be beneficial, it's not necessary to achieve visibility, bearing in mind that this is a long-established vehicular access. In officers' view, it would be highly unreasonable to resist the removal of conditions eight and nine on highway safety grounds, given the appeal decision. In addition, the inspector noted that the existing stone wall is naturally weathered, and an established feature of the street scene, and that rebuilding it could have a negative impact on the character and appearance of the area. Can I just draw a ten, members' attention, please, to item three on the supplementary report? We do have an additional representation from councillor Leary in relation to the appeal decision, specifically the inspector's onsite observations regarding existing parking. That's summarised in page sixty-seven, uh, second paragraph of the, um, agenda. I won't read that in full. But councillor Leary noted that the position of the front boundary wall narrows the footway, which it does in this position, uh, and at present there is no parking demand along the site frontage, although there's nothing to prevent anybody parking there. He said that this could change when the property is constructed, as there are only two allocated, allocated parking spaces per property. He queried the inspector's comments with regard to cars parked in the footway. The inspector observed cars parked either side of the, uh, application site, uh, and parked on the footway, so preventing, uh, people from passing. Councillor Leary noted that to the east of the site, on-street parking areas are marked out, so there's no need to park on the pavement here. He is aware that to the west of the site, vehicles do pull onto the pavement, but has not himself observed the footway being blocked. Uh, he stated that Wheel Lane has the most speeding issues of any road in the north, lack, um, with a fifty percent record of speeding at this point on the road from the VAS, and that is the, um, vehicle activated sign, um, that records, uh, vehicle speeds, uh, and raised concerns about pedestrians having to cross the road to the other footway, where there is no housing, and crossing back again to avoid the site frontage if the footpath wasn't inaccessible by a parked car. I mean, I think, I mean, I can, I can read the relevant extract from the inspector's decision, it's probably, uh, relevant. From the evidence in front of me, it would appear that the condition was added, this is condition eight, following discussions between the planning officer and the appellant, in order to allow for a full two-metre footway to the front of the site for highway safety purposes. Subsequently, it would appear that the highways consultee has commented that the wall does not require moving in order to achieve sufficient vehicle visibility to exit the site at the proposed access. So it was a nice-to-have rather than not, rather than being necessary. There is obviously an existing footway to the front of the appeal site. In addition to this, the opposite side of the highway has a footpath along its length. At the time of his site visit, there were two cars parked on the footpath above and below the site frontage, which I presume were for visitors to, to the other properties. These had the effect of making the footpath, footpath inaccessible at those points, so the pedestrians using that side of the footpath would have to walk into the highway to pass the parked cars. This situation would still occur if the wall were to be moved back and a vehicle was parked on the footway. And it's considered that the inspector making a number of points in relation to highway safety, um, he was making a number of points, sorry. Firstly, that inappropriate parking already occurs along this length of Wheel Lane, and that setting back the wall is not a proportionate response to the perceived problem, as it would not prevent cars from blocking the highway. Secondly, that pedestrians have an alternative option, which is to cross the road, uh, to the other footway. Um, in addition, in addition, there will be two off-street parking spaces per dwelling, which is similar to, and in some cases more than the level of parking at most of the neighbouring properties. Um, visitors, visitors may be able to park on-site, but if there, there aren't any onsite spaces, um, available, then they can also park safely on Wheel Lane, not necessarily in front of the site, uh, the development site. And the other thing, I just wanted to briefly draw members' attention to you, is that since the, uh, committee report was published, the planning inspector actually reissued their appeal decision, and that was just to correct a drafting error. In one instance, the original version referred to condition ten rather than condition eight, but it doesn't change the outcome of that appeal in any way.
Thank you, Dinah. Have members got any questions from this? Mary Ann?
Thanks. Can I just clarify? So since this decision's actually been made by the inspector, what, what are we being asked to decide? Because it seems that, um, obviously eight and nine have pretty much been removed by the inspector. So are we essentially just approving the change of two as a formality, and then the air conditioning units?
Condition eight was removed by the inspector. The appeal didn't refer to condition nine, but when that, condition nine relates to condition eight, so there's a logic, obviously, in removing that also. And then the other, so it's, so it's to align, it's to remove condition nine, align the consent with the appeal decision, but then also to vary the list of approved plans to allow the two air conditioning units to be placed next to the air source heat pumps.
Sorry, just so I can understand, so is that just a formality, really? It's not that the inspector sort of requested that it come back to committee, it's really just to sort of tie it all up?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
I have to say that if we were to decide to disagree and vote against the officer recommendation, the applicant can just go back to the inspector, and, and it's gonna be overturned, and the applicant will get what, what they've wanted here with the variation on conditions. I really don't think this requires much discussion on this one. And I can see my co-chair shaking his head in agreement. Brian?
However, however, we haven't seen, we haven't seen, I certainly was not involved in this first time round, so I haven't seen what the air conditioning units look like and where they're going to be located. Have you got a photograph?
They're on the side of the building, I think that was clear from the pictures. But I dare say Dinah can shed more light.
You've got photographs of them, have you?
We don't, because I think it's condition twelve requires the full details to be submitted. But the locations are shown on plan, so, um, on the left-hand plot, in the rear garden next to the car park. And on the right-hand plot, down the side of the house, there are, we've already approved air source heat pumps in those locations, and there are no objections from the Environmental Protection Service.
No objections from the Environmental Protection Service for the air source heat pumps?
Or the air conditioning units.
That's what I wanted to hear. All right, okay. Uh, I, I, I mean, I'm loath to pass anything when I've not actually seen what it looks like, but I think that's the position we're in, isn't it?
Richard?
And it would probably go back to the, uh, to the inspector anyway.
I think the key point there with the air con units is that there are further details are required by conditions, so we will be able to, uh, assess their impact.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, just for my reassurance regarding the air condition, conditioners, are they in a, what I would call a, a neighbourly position? And are they, um, governed by guidelines in terms of noise and things like that?
The, the condition, condition twelve, uh, requires, um, full details of, of the equipment, including acoustic emission data, so, and that will be, um, considered by the Environmental Protection Service. So they, yes, they will be considering the immunity of the neighbours when they're looking at those details.
Glynnis?
Yeah, well, having lived in Spain where air conditioning was a necessity, we did have rules to say that air conditioning units had to go on the back of properties, because it made a real mess, where people had them stuck all over the place. And I wondered whether the council could actually bring in some regulations to say where they should be positioned.
We don't have any regulations, and I don't think it's a policy in the emerging plan, but we would always consider visual immunity when we're looking at any form of plant. Sometimes it's, it's unavoidable to have something on the front of a building, um, but even then we would try to, to disguise it or, but in this case, it's down the side of the house, behind the air source heat pump, and in the rear garden, so neither of the air con units will be seen from the.
So it's going to work in all four double bedrooms then, just from the side of the property? Because that would take an awful lot of ducting inside the property, and I can't see anybody wanting to do that cost-wise.
In terms of how it's working and the mechanics of the interior of the house, I, I can't answer that question. I can, we could only assess the location of the, of the unit on the exterior.
It may be that it's not going to feed into all, all the rooms inside, but that's up to the applicant. It's not really a material planning matter. Are there any more questions? Does any member want to comment? Okay, can we proceed to a vote? All those in favour of the recommendation? You're going by show of hands, but have I got to do it by name on this one, given it's a variation of conditions?
And this is a section seventy-three application, so I think the usual course is to go round the, round the room. Thank you.
Okay, Nick Appen?
For the recommendations, Chair.
Nikki?
Support the recommendations, Chair.
Mark?
For the recommendations, Chair.
Tony?
For Chair.
Janet?
For the recommendations.
Brian?
I'm gonna abstain on this issue. Thank you, Chair.
Mary Ann?
Thank you, Chair. I think, I do question the comments about highway safety, and I think it, it clearly is inherently dangerous for pedestrians, and it's basically saying it's okay to park vehicles on pavements and make it dangerous. I think that's a missed opportunity for making highway improvements. Um, obviously I've read everything and I understand the implications, so I'll have to abstain on this one.
Gary?
Abstain, Chair.
Alan?
For Chair.
Glynnis?
For Chair.
Richard? Andrew?
For the officer's recommendation, Chair.
And that is carried by majority vote. Thank you, members. I'm now going to ask that, uh, we take a, a five-minute comfort break. Okay? We can get back here just before four o'clock, that would be on that clock. Thank you, members. Double zero three five seven stroke O U T, that's land between Manchester Road, The Rookery and Rookery Vale in Stocksbridge, although most people would say it's Deep Car, I believe. And councillor Janet Riddler, uh, has now moved out of her chair to, to sit with the public, because she will be speaking at a later point on this item. So I'm going to ask Sarah to present this report.
Thank you, Chair. This is an outline application for up to twenty-two houses. Um, all matters are reserved for future approval, except for access. This slide shows the redline boundary of the site. Manchester Road runs to the east of the site, and residential development on The Rookery Estate is sighted to the west. The aerial, uh, view illustrates that housing, it's predominantly housing to the north and the west of the site. To the south, you can see some trees, uh, that is part of a local wildlife site, and beyond that is greenbelt land. To the east, man, beyond Manchester Road, um, you can see there's a property and there's a sewage works, and beyond that, so the area further to these, to the right-hand side of the screen, is part of the Blough Homes development, uh, which has got planning permission for approximately four hundred houses, um, and they've recently commenced development on that site. These are some images of The Rookery, which is the housing estate to the west of the site. So, um, the top two images are taken from an informal footpath within the application site, and looking back towards the, the, um, those properties. The image on the left-hand bottom of the screen, um, is again taken from that informal footpath toward, back towards houses on the, on Rookery Vale. You can make out some trees within that image, uh, to the left-hand side of the image. Um, they are within the application site, and they are, uh, mature trees, which are proposed to be retained. The site is very steeply sloping, um, it's predominantly set to grassland, formerly being used as grazing, and it's got trees, um, surrounding it. These are properties on Wilson Road, which are located to the north of the site. And these are some images taken from within the site itself, which illustrate the slope of the site and you can see the trees surrounding the site. So the bottom images are looking down towards Manchester Road and you can see that there's also trees lining that boundary along Manchester Road. These are, again, images taken from within the sites, again illustrating the trees and the character of the site itself. And then these images are taken from Manchester Road, so you can see that there's existing trees along the boundary. The image in the top right-hand corner of the screen gives a clear view along Manchester Road there and you can see the boundary wall and the trees to the side of the image. There is an existing site access, which isn't particularly clear to see within these images, but if you look towards that bottom left of the screen, there is a gate. Thank you. There we go. There's a gate which provides access to the site and is proposed to be the access for the proposed housing site. So the application is outlined, so that means that we're approving today what we would be approving in theory, would be the principle of development and the means of access of the site. All other elements of the scheme will be reserved for a future approval through a future applications. However, the applicant has submitted indicative details of how the site could be developed in the future, which are useful to look at and to consider. So this is an indicative layout plan, which illustrates how the site could be developed for up to 22 houses. It shows a linear form of development with parking to the front and gardens to the rear and it shows the boundary trees to be retained. Sorry, just as well... You can see the access on there. The access would require the removal of some trees. It would require the loss of two category C trees and a category B tree group. This is a landscape plan and it illustrates that... So the green circles and linear forms are the existing trees and it's showing those to be retained, aside from those ones which are highlighted in red around the site access, which I've just discussed. And it also proposes landscaping within the site comprising tree planting and other landscaping. This is a proposed site access, so it's using that access which we indicated in that photograph earlier. It illustrates the visibility displays along the road. You can also see the position of the proposed access in relation to the junction with the Blaw Homes site, which is just to the top of the left-hand image. And this is an indicative section illustrating how the site could be developed. So the proposal suggests that there would be some significant excavation of the slope. So the green line that you can see on the image is the existing slope and the blue line shows the excavation that would be involved in, potentially in creating these houses. And this shows stepped terrace garden areas, but it also shows that there would be retaining walls required as part of that. And again, it shows the trees around the site to be retained and the land levels not to be altered within the vicinity of those trees. Oh, I don't know what's happened.
Where did it go?
I don't know. Thank you. I'll have to whizz all the way through. So I'll just pop through those photos again and we'll go back to the layout plan to discuss the proposal. So the site is within a housing area as allocated in the UDP. It is a greenfield site, so it's not previously been developed. The core strategy policy requires a brownfield-first approach and states that no more than 12% of new housing should be on greenfield sites. The most recent current figures that we've got indicate that we've achieved 93% of housing development on previously developed land. That figure is for 22 to 23. The most recent data hasn't been published yet, but indications suggest that it would be around a similar mark as the 93%. The site is within a sustainable location, within an existing urban area with access to existing facilities and amenities within that local area. In terms of design, the application is outlined and so we aren't assessing the design today. However, officers are satisfied that appropriate design could come forward as part of a reserve matters application, which would suitably reflect the character of the area. At the moment, there's a lot of excavation proposed on the site and we would expect that less excavation was proposed as part of a reserve matters application and that the proposal worked better with the existing land levels. In terms of immunity, the closest residential properties on the Rookery and there would be adequate separation distances could be achieved to ensure that there wasn't unacceptable overbearing, overshadowing or loss of privacy to those properties. Officers have raised some concerns about the proposed excavation and the impact of the sort of retaining walls on the rear elevations of those properties if the site were to be developed with that level of excavation. So we would have to consider that further when the reserve matters application came in, because we are just looking at the principle of the development and the means of access at this stage. Oh, it's gone again. Oh, okay. Can I... Can you bring it up again, please? Thank you. In terms of ecology, the site is predominantly grazed grassland with trees on the boundary. A preliminary ecological appraisal has been submitted, which doesn't identify any protected species on the site, although it may be used for foraging for bats, but that could continue if the site were developed, particularly given that the trees will be retained. The illustrative plans indicate landscaping scheme and tree planting that will result in a net gain of 23.95% habitat units and 11.77% hedgerow units, which is in excess of the 10% required by the mandatory net gain policies. There is a local wildlife site to the south of the site and we would need to ensure that there was an appropriate buffer between the application and that local wildlife site. But our ecology officers have advised that, in theory, that could be achieved, particularly given that the trees are to be retained. So in terms of trees, the plans show all to be retained except for those around the site access. The trees to the rear of the site, which bound the Rookery development, are the best quality trees on the site. They comprise a mixture of beech, sycamore and oak trees and they are good quality specimens, which are predominantly category B with a couple of category A trees in there. The planning layout does indicate a slight encroachment within the trees. So you can see, if you look at the right-hand side of the screen, the six properties there, three pairs of semi-detached houses, you can see that there's a small area where the green canopy is overlaid with the boundary retaining walls, but which we would not want to see as part of any future reserve matters application. But again, it's just highlighting that this is an outline application and future details will come forward as part of a new scheme. The trees to the front of the site are a mixture of category B and category C. They offer good screening from the road and are of a high immunity value. Again, they are shown to be retained, but our tree officer has raised some concerns about ash dieback with those trees and the potential longevity of those trees. So the retention of the trees will be secured through conditions and further detail will be provided at reserve matters stage. The site is within flood zone one. Drainage by infiltration will not be suitable because of the ground conditions. It's quite clay soil, so it wouldn't be possible to drain through infiltration. So drainage would need to be some sort of engineered and piped discharge solution. But the drainage officer has confirmed that a suitable solution could be achieved, subject to conditions and further details at reserve matters stage. In terms of the access, which is from Manchester Road as previously indicated, highways officers are content that the adequate visibility displays will be retained and that there's sufficient separation distances between the access and the Blaw's home access and the traffic signals. And 22 houses would result in only minimal additional trips to the local highway network. The proposal includes a 10% provision towards affordable housing, which will be secured by legal agreement and a financial contribution to bus stop improvements as well. There have been 33 neighbour letters objecting to the scheme and the objections are summarised in the officer report, plus councillor letters as well. There is a very short supplementary, which just highlights that two additional representations have been received, but the majority of the points have already been summarised and so they've not been repeated. The two points that have been raised, which aren't included in the officer report, have been summarised as well. And then the only other matter in there is just to clarify that the report refers to NMP and a councillor who are no longer holding those positions. So it's just to clarify that those... It's clarified that point there. So the officer recommendation for this one is to grant condition subject to a legal agreement.
Thank you, Sarah. I'm now going to invite five speakers on this application, four of them speaking against and one of them before. I'm going to start with councillor Julie Grokett, if you'd like to come to the table.
Good afternoon, members. I'm here today to object to this planning application, following numerous concerns being raised with me as a local councillor and also as a resident in Stockbridge. Having examined the application and knowing the site, I have very serious concerns. I hope that as members, you have all visited the site and can see how challenging it will be to develop. It is an extremely steep site, it is in a very attractive rural location and has wildlife that we should be protecting. The infrastructure to support this development is not in place and I would summarise my objections as follows. Access and egress to the site, lack of public transport, road issues including parking, highway safety and congestion, the rural nature and location of the site, ecological concerns, the development on the site including earthwork, site management issues and the effect of the construction. Manchester Road is the only road giving access into the Sheffield city centre and onto the bypass for the M1 motorway. The importance of this road, this single carriageway road, cannot be underestimated. The ward has a population of 18,500 people, which is growing with the number of large developments currently underway. Blaw Homes are building over 400 homes directly across the road from this proposed development. The Blaw estate has traffic lights to manage the road onto Manchester Road to control the traffic. About 50 metres away from there, there is then a separate set of traffic lights onto the junction with Car Road, which is already a bottleneck. And if travelling towards the bypass, there is then a one-way bridge to cross to get onto the bypass. Manchester Road has only two carriageways, one in each direction of travel, with no opportunity to widen it due to topography. There are bends in the road, which you don't really see when looking at the photographs that the officers provided, that mean that access to the development will be dangerous. Indeed, when the Rookery estate was built directly above this estate, I'm told that planning was refused at this entrance due to its location on Manchester Road. You also have to consider this road is now considerably busier and when travelling towards One Plisside, on the opposite side of the road to the development, there is also the household waste recycling centre. Traffic often queues way back on Manchester Road while it's waiting to gain access into the household recycling centre. So basically, the chaos that will occur on this road cannot be overestimated. The area suffers from public transport poverty and having written with concerns to the SYMCA Mayor recently, I've been told there are no plans for immediate improvement in the near future, so residence will have to continue to rely on private vehicles. And we are also now aware that the railway will not be coming to Stockbridge, which again would have alleviated some of the road congestion issues. The site is semi-rural and the proposed development will be over-engineering the landscape. Sheffield City Council's local plan is currently going through the inspection process and sets out clearly that we should be protecting green spaces. There are numerous brownfield sites in Stockbridge that are still not developed. Why are we planning to develop on greenfield sites before those? There is a large back colony on the site and I would draw your attention to the details in the reports submitted by the Sheffield Back Protection Group as to further evidence as to why this proposal should be refused. Due to the steepness of the site, the massive earthworks will need to be undertaken if this application is passed, adding to the traffic chaos on Manchester Road. The topography and the size of the site mean that workers on the site will not be able to park on-site. They will be parking on Manchester Road, adding to the traffic chaos on the road. For comparison, at a development that is currently undergoing on Bocking Hill near to this site, where 14 homes are being built, there are daily between 10 and 20 vehicles parked on this road. Today, there are 15. I counted them on the way here. Manchester Road cannot support that amount of parking while the development is being undertaken. Parking spaces for the homes is not sufficient for residents and visitors and deliveries. Again, Manchester Road will become the parking place, make it impossible and dangerous for driving on this road. This development is only for 22 homes. The detrimental impact of the small number of homes on this site is not proportionate. The application should be refused. Thank you, members.
Thank you, Julie. Would councillor Keith Davis from Stockbridge Town Council like to come to the microphone, please?
I think you know by now it's five minutes for each speaker.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. What I have to say is not new and Julie's covered an awful lot of it there, but there are over 50 public comments on the portal, all in objection and mostly citing the same issues. And as I have only five minutes, I'm only going to concentrate on what I believe to be the two major issues, which are topography and the site and the risks of ingress and egress. For those of you who did not seize the opportunity to view this proposed development, it sits immediately across the road from the Blaw's development, which seems to have been going on for an eternity. I believe there will be 439 houses on this site, all exiting opposite this development. As yet, I don't believe any of these houses are occupied, but once the estate is complete, the peak traffic period is will be chaos. Consider vehicles leaving the proposed site, looking left, praying for a gap and gambling when a truck comes racing to you from the opposite direction around the blind bend on Manchester Road. And add to that, the long line of cars queuing up for recycling centres just up the road is just another hazard. The Blaw's site being on the east side of the road has the benefit of clear sight around the bend, which this access does not. With regard to topography, you will have hopefully seen the site and can form your own opinion. The topography site states that a large amount of earth movement will be required to prepare the site. This brings about major concerns regarding earthmoving traffic and the change in traffic conditions and road conditions, especially during wet weather. And further to that, in reading from the Coal Authority report, the report states that voids and groundworkings could result in surface instability. There are also underground springs and watercourses, which place the site as a possible medium flood risk. With regard to ingress and egress, in my own opinion, this is a single element which should render this site unsuitable for development. Manchester Road is a busy trunk route to Sheffield in the south and Manchester and the motorway network to the northwest. The access road will lead directly onto a blind bend with vehicles approaching at up to 60 mile an hour. And a paragraph in the planning officers' report, if I've read it right, states that there is an increased risk of the possibility of road traffic accidents and fatalities. The actual speed limit does reduce twice here, but I'll guarantee if you stood there from morning until noon and morning until night, you wouldn't see one come round here in any less than 40, 50 mile an hour. I'm sure I'm right and I'm pretty sure Julie just touched on it, but I can't substantiate it, that the proposed access to Manchester Road was discussed back in the early 90s when the Rookery development was being built. And you can... You could see on the previous drawing that was upset, on Rookery Vale, there is still a cutout there that was designed to actually feed to Manchester Road. I would imagine that if... I would imagine that if they had have passed it at that time, then we wouldn't be having this discussion now, because it would already have been built on with access coming through Manchester Road. Furthermore, and simply as a means of comparison, I would ask you to consider this. Planning application 17-01694-OUT, back in 2017, which referred to the action of a single dwelling on Brumfield Lane, was denied planning stating, "The local planning authority consider that a means of vehicle access would be by reason of restricted visibility be detrimental to other road users and the free and safe traffic flow, and as such is contrary to Unitary Development Plan Policy H14D." This was one house that was going to be built next to existing dwellings on a side road in a suburb with very little traffic, with a curve on the road and not a blind bend on a busy trunk route. Traffic exiting Brumfield Lane uses Noel's Avenue and Almity Road if going to the city centre, and Lee Avenue and Nanny Hill if you abound for Manchester or the motorway network, accessing that through Fox Valley. I see no reason why the principles in this rejection should not be adopted here. I've mentioned groundwork traffic, but if this application is passed, you may need to consider construction traffic, and where will the contractors park their vans? Again, for comparison, if you want to check out the vehicles parked on Bocking Hill and Brackenmore Lane for a similar sized development, parking on Manchester Road would be an accident waiting to happen. Developers may have considered an alternative access point by entry and exit through Rookery Vale and the Rookery. This would be an absolute non-starter, as it would create safety risks on Rookery Vale, which is a small cul-de-sac where children play. It would create extra volumes of traffic at Town and Lane, Hillcrest Road and Car Road, where congestion is already at a saturation point. I provide this status as an individual who sees the risks for what they are. I am a local councillor representing the Deepcar Ward on Stockbridge Town Council, and my views are shared with the local councils and the residents of the surrounding area. I live on the Rookery, and many local residents aware their feelings to me, and I speak from their behalf. Please consider the potential risk this development could cause, not only to the environment and wildlife, but most of all, the serious risk to human life. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Keith. I'm going to ask Peter Smith to come to the microphone, please.
My name's Peter Smith, and I live on Rookery Vale overlooking the field. I agree with all the various multiple objections already documented on the planning website from residents, local councillors, and our former MP, and it is disappointing to note that these have been largely ignored, and there has been no consultation with those objecting. I also find it strange that recently one of my neighbours was refused permission for a balcony to be placed on a one-storey extension, which was approved, I hasten to add, on the grounds of privacy to neighbours, and yet here we are looking to approve an application to build 22 houses overlooking that property, and indeed that of mine and many of my other neighbours too. I would now like to read out a statement drafted by one of my neighbours, who was unable to attend today, whose views I also share. In particular, I echo the comments they make about the danger this poses to road safety, given the already congested Car Road, Manchester Road, Vorton Hill junction, as well as the constant congestion around the waste recycling centre very close to the proposed development. This is going to get considerably worse once the Blaws home development and other ongoing developments in the area are finished, with several hundred more cars in the area. This is a statement from one of my neighbours. There are many objections which have been stated that councillors will have already read. There are, though, a few of these that actually pose a hazard to the general public should permission for this development go ahead. In the report, it states that many matters raised could be reserved until full permission is considered. However, the position of the proposed junction is fixed, and the distance to the blind corner from Sheffield is fixed. In outlining their recommendation to approve the new development, Sheffield Planning Department concede that traffic approaching the proposed new access road from Stockbridge could be travelling in speeds of excess of 30 miles an hour if the proposed traffic signals for the new Blaw development are on green. The report completely ignores and detracts from the actual concern, which is traffic coming in the opposite direction from Sheffield on the road that is largely 60 miles per hour. It is surprising that the planning department are recommending approving outline planning permission without carrying out an appropriate study of the speed of this traffic coming from Sheffield around the blind corner towards the newly proposed junction. Assumption that traffic will be coming around the corner at 30 miles an hour is naive and not what local residents have observed. Virtually nobody does this speed, and many go much faster. Cars go through the 60 miles per hour bit home section of the road at high speeds, then Deepcar appears suddenly after the blind corner. The proposed exit onto Manchester Road is 70 metres from that blind corner, though the speed limit coming around the corner has just been changed to 30 miles per hour. Few people are doing 30 miles an hour coming around the corner, and at 40 miles per hour under wet conditions, it would not be possible to stop within 70 metres. When the Rookery Estate was built, permission was denied allowing the road to continue from the Rookery onto Manchester Road at this point, citing safety concerns. Manchester Road is much busier now than it was 30 years ago, and with over 400 new homes from the Blaw residents shortly to be joining the traffic as well. There has been many accidents on this road at the junction of Tmall Hill Lane, which is a bigger visibility display, but this illustrates the issue. In the original application, there are references to challenges of dealing with surface water, and Manchester Road is already regularly flooded at this point, which would increase the stopping distance. The desk study reports submitted with the application states that on-site slope instability problems are probably present or have occurred in the past, and that this should be considered. It is very difficult without a better understanding of the groundwater present to speculate how the removal of such a huge volume of rock and soak-away material would impact on surface water on Manchester Road and the road safety already mentioned. Local residents have already endured the noise, dust, and ice ore of the Blaw development for over 20 years. The site, excuse me, the site has been beset with problems of surface water in the runoff from Warkliff Crags, as has the development on Holling Bus. The issues on Copey's Close Stockbridge are so bad that the houses still cannot be completed. Historically flooding of the road has caused serious problems. In 2007, a landslide closed the main road into Sheffield for 18 months. There is every chance that when completed, this development will contribute to environmental stress from diverted watercourses. There needs to be time to allow the current developments to complete, some of which are years behind schedule, to allow agencies to assess the impact. The field currently forms a green buffer from the solid block of houses that is Deepcar and the future solid block of Blaw Homes. This development would alter the view of Deepcar from Manchester Road on entering Deepcar from the multiple viewpoints of road users and walkers. 22 houses is a small gain and is completely overshadowed by the detriment this development would have to the area. Many local people, local councillors, and environmental representatives have urged the planning committee not to support this application, and I would urge the committee to reject this application. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Peter Smith. Now calling councillor Janet Ridley to the microphone.
And again, just for clarity, I'm speaking today as a member of the public and as ward councillor representing Stockbridge in Oxford-on-Witch, is where this proposed development is to take place if it is approved. Earlier this year, as I mentioned, I did put in, which I know you will have seen, my objection to this proposed development, because I do have a number of concerns about its impact should it be allowed to go ahead. And as you've seen today, the proposed site is a green space, it's adjacent to the green belt. This says to me that it should be protected from development. This is in accordance with the Sheffield local plan, which we as a council approved a year ago, and which is well on its way through government to be implemented. And so I do feel that the local plan should be given significant weight when considering this application. The thrust of the local plan is to ensure that developments like this are not permitted to encroach on our precious green space. We, as a council, we're setting out to protect the city's green belt. There is plenty of brownfield space in Stockbridge, which, in my opinion, should be prioritised over an area like this. As you've heard already, Deepcar already has a huge number of houses under construction. Hundreds of houses are being built. So when we're looking, for example, at the implication of extra traffic feeding onto an already badly congested Manchester Road, we're just not looking at these 22 houses today, but we're looking at all the extra vehicles which are going to be having a huge impact as these developments come to completion. As you've seen demonstrated, and you've heard about, the site on Manchester Road, the exit point on Manchester Road is on a blind corner. It is where the speed limit changes, a very short distance before from 60 miles an hour, and as we've heard, you know, this traffic does take longer to slow down. No traffic survey has been conducted, so I think that any assertion that access to the site is safe should be regarded with some caution. Still on the theme of traffic, parking provision, there is a very worrying lack of parking provision here. This part of Sheffield is an area where people have to rely on cars. The public transport system running from Stockbridge is virtually non-existent. I've noticed as well that South Yorkshire Police have raised security concerns relating to a proposed pathway there, which says to me that things haven't properly, you know, been thought through prior as well as they should be. And even if these plans are at this stage only indicative, I do feel that it does indicate, these points indicate to me very strongly that due thought has not been given to the important issue of road safety and security. In addition, the site's on a very steep slope, and building on it is going to require a huge scale of earth movements, which raises very important concerns, I feel, about the stability and the possibility of landscapes, as we've already heard, it's not so many years ago that this happened just in this area. The area is prone to flooding, to surface water, to subsidence, this historic mining activity, all these are ongoing, very important, very concerning matters that at the moment we've not seen these play through, and yet this development to go ahead could have a, you know, really catastrophic effect. In Sheffield, we've declared a nature emergency, and so rightly we have targets to improve biodiversity, but this development would have serious negative impact on wildlife in this area. Now, this land is home to an abundance of wildlife. There are bat colonies, there are birds, there are owls that have lived here for decades, and I've noted that the Sheffield Bat Protection Group have indeed made an objection. So any proposed ecological development of this site should mandate a complete ecological survey. I don't feel that we can give any credence to a claim from applicants saying that they're contributing to and enhancing the natural environment when there has been no Species Policy Commission relating to biodiversity. So in brief, members, I think that the large number of safety, environmental, and ecological concerns surrounding this proposal greatly outweigh any possible benefit of building 22 houses on a site which appears to be geographically and environmentally unstable, and so I would urge the committee to refuse this application. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Janet. And our last speaker. Our last speaker is Sora Beatty, the agent for this application. If you'd like to come to the microphone. And you'll need to switch it on. It's the button on the right, lower down.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this afternoon. My name is Sora Beatty and act as agent to the application. The content of the officer's report is supported, and we welcome the recommendation to grant planning permission. As set out in the planning officer's report, the site is located within a housing area which is within the adopted local plan, and the principle of redevelopment for housing is not disputed. The site is within private ownership, and it has never been publicly accessible. The application is in outline, and as the planning officer has stated, it seeks permission for the principal only of 22 new dwellings. Details relating to scale, layout, design, and landscaping must be agreed with the council through the reserved matters submissions. We have, however, considered the matters raised during the application process, including comments raised by local residents, and we'd like to take this opportunity to respond to those matters. The footpath, so the indicative layout does show a pedestrian footpath from Rookery Vale through the site and beyond to Manchester Road. During the application process, we did discuss with officers about removing this, but because the layout is indicative only, it wasn't deemed necessary, and officers thought there was benefit to providing a footpath. However, we can confirm the applicant is happy to remove this footpath if it is felt unrequired, and that there was concerns raised with people walking through Rookery Vale, down through the site and beyond. However, as the site is, the application is in outline, it isn't set in stone that this footpath should be delivered, and it's something that can be removed if felt necessary, and the applicant is happy to do that. Highways, there has been no objection from the highways officer at the council. The existing access is going to be improved and widened, and visibility displays have been demonstrated to accord with the requirements needed for highway safety. In terms of congestion, there's no evidence to suggest that 22 dwellings would have an impact in highway safety, and there's no evidence of fatalities or collisions at the site access point. Topography, so the topography may seem challenging to laypeople that it is undevelopable. However, you know, houses on hillsides are constructed. This site would not be the first, nor the last, to see houses built on a site with a topography that's not flat. It is within the interests of all parties that detailed and expert assessments are undertaken. We will engage with geotechnical engineers, environmental consultants, and drainage engineers. This advice will play an important role in providing a design solution that ensures the buildings will have stability and safety for the existing and future occupiers. The applicant has already agreed to additional planning conditions that seek ground investigation works and stability assessments prior to the commencement of development. In terms of drainage, condition nine relates to the submission and approval of technical evidence, including excavation and retaining structures to inform the detailed drainage strategy. And in terms of ecology, a detailed preliminary ecological assessment was undertaken, including a bat survey, and the council's ecology agrees to those assessments that were submitted as part of the planning application. Notwithstanding these, the draft layout shows that the site is capable of delivering a development with just the loss of two trees and a replacement that provides biodiversity net gain of 22%, which is double than the national requirement. Finally, I would like to highlight that, sorry, I'll just, I'll just try my last bit, sorry. Finally, therefore, considering the application as a whole, the council needs to consider that they cannot demonstrate a four-year housing land supply, and officers have confirmed in their report that there's just a three-year housing land supply available in the district. Importantly, the draft MPPF, which is expected to be published by the end of the year, restores the requirements for local planning authorities to demonstrate a five-year housing land supply even when the adopted plan is less than five years old. This reflects the need for local planning authorities to adopt and respond to change in the delivery after the adoption of a plan to ensure they continue to meet their housing need. The reduced... The reduced requirement to demonstrate a four-year housing land supply for local plans that have reached Regulation 18 or 19, as in Sheffield, is expected to be removed, meaning consistency is applied regardless of plan progress to require a five-year housing land supply. Lastly, but by no means least, the application is policy compliant and proposes to provide affordable housing in accordance with the council's requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Sora. I'm now going to ask Sarah to respond to points that were raised. Are you happy to go ahead or do you want a recap on how many?
I'll try my best. Thank you. So I'm not going to go into a massive amount of detail. In relation to highways, Mark is here and will provide answers to any questions that members have, in particular about highways, so I'm not going to go into detail about that at the moment. There was reference to a couple of other planning applications made, one was Broomfield Lane and one was about a balcony, which were refused for various reasons, but just to draw members' attention to the fact that each application is determined on its own merits, so we're looking at this application on its own merits at this stage. In terms of flooding, the site is within flood zone one. In terms of any surface water flooding of the road that is outside of the application site boundary, and drainage solution could be engineered to ensure that the, any drainage from the site doesn't contribute to any existing surface water flooding problems. In terms of the new, the draft local plan, just to highlight that the site won't be in the green belt, it's still not going through in the green belt, it will be within an urban green space zone, but we can only give that policy very limited weight, given the stage of examination that we're at with that. In terms of land stability, there's various conditions about coal mining, drainage, which would require details of stability and also building regs would consider that as well. And to highlight, it is an outline application, so we don't exactly know how much excavation will be involved in the proposal and what the final design of the scheme will look like. I think I'll leave it there.
In that case, there were a few other points that came up, so could I ask you to respond to the one about wildlife and in particular the assertion from at least two of the speakers that there is a bat colony on the site?
So there has been a preliminary ecological appraisal carried out. The comments, the objections referred to the bat, I can't remember the name of them, the bat group that have objected, but the objections were because they hadn't seen the ecological survey, because when that comes in, we make it confidential so that people can't see it for reasons of protecting wildlife. And so part of the comments stated that they hadn't seen a survey and haven't seen the ecological appraisal, and therefore, and they were aware that there were lots of bats in the area. Our ecology officer has looked at the survey in detail and looked at the comments provided by the Bat Trust and confirmed that he hasn't got any objections about the proposal in relation to bats. The site may well be used as foraging and commuting, but that potential wouldn't be lost as part of the application. The trees will be retained and an enlarged amount of the grassed area will be retained and enhanced as well, so there aren't any officer concerns about the impact in terms of ecology and on bats.
Thank you, Sarah. One of the speakers mentioned the overlooking of a house down the hills, not looking up at Rookery, but I presume that's the house that's down on Manchester Road.
Just bring up the layout plan to show you the relationship. So, yeah, there's Midghall Farm is the nearest house down on the opposite side of Manchester Road, which you can probably just about make out there, it's sort of quite close to the proposed access. But the separation distances that could be achieved, obviously it's outlined, so we don't know exactly what the separation distances will be, but as indicated there, those separation distances are such that they would be in excess of our requirements and overlooking would not be something that we would be able to refuse the application on.
The requirement, 17 metres in distance.
Is 21 metres between main-facing windows.
So it exceeds 21 metres, thank you for that. Yeah. There was, what was the other? I think we're going to have to go to the transport officer, highways officer, I should say, to talk about the highways issues that were raised by several of the speakers and in the representations.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I appreciate the concerns that have been raised. I'll try and answer them as best I can. Mention was made of the waste recycling facility on Manchester Road and the queuing that it generates and congestion and safety concerns there. My view of that is that, I don't think the concern is that it's a simple priority junction like what's being proposed here, unnecessarily a problem with visibility displays. I think it's just a case of waste recycling facilities are notoriously laid out in a fashion that tries to manage queuing, they're so popular, the volume of people wanting to use them, it's hard for them to keep the pace with and accommodate a number of vehicles off the road just because of the sheer volume. And I think in, and I think that's across the city, I sometimes use the one up at Shycliffe, and you could be waiting 20 minutes, half an hour sometimes just to get in, and that's just the time it takes for people to unload their car and move on to make space for somebody else. The layout here isn't akin to that at all, it's a very simple priority junction with five and a half metre carriageways and 22 houses. There won't be any queuing within the development for any traffic that wants to turn into it to hit the back of. So in that sense, the priority junction of visibility, possibly similar to the waste management facility, it's just that the waste management has issues with capacity, which causes the queuing. There won't be issues of capacity here. Vehicles will be able to turn in and park up without having to queue back into the carriageway. And if you look on the plan that's up there at the moment, the stagger between the Blue Homes access and the development site access is in a region of about 60 metres or so, and there's some hatching in the middle of the road there. So cars wanting to turn right into the development site will be able to stand on that hatching and not cause a blockage, congestion tailing back. And cars wanting to turn left into the site wouldn't, as I say, wouldn't be hitting a queue of traffic, it would be a simple turn in and onto the car parking space. Mention was made of not enough car parking within the development site and concerns about visitors and such like parking on Manchester Road. Well, this is all indicative at the moment, we can push for more on-plot car parking. And the width of the road there internally, it's all indicative, but it's five and a half metres. Cars can generally park five and a half metre carriageways and not block access into and out of private drives, so I think the big concerns are the blind bend was mentioned and the speed of traffic on Manchester Road. The Blue Homes development actually pushed the national speed limit back towards Sheffield quite a distance, and then there was a 40 miles per hour and then 30 miles per hour. So the section of carriageway here should be 30 miles an hour. I appreciate people are saying it's driven much faster than that. On page 98, talk about visibility displays and standards for different visibilities. And the submitted drawings show that a 70-metre visibility display can be achieved irrespective of this blind bend, you can see 70 metres down the road from the site access. And that, if it had been 30, if people were driving at 30 miles per hour, the standards would be 2.4 metres played by 43 metres. The 59-metre visibility distance, a visibility display would equate to 37 miles per hour. So I guess the gap in the report is the fact that, I mean, my view is that they can achieve 70 metres, not 59 metres. 59 equates to 37 miles per hour. I would be surprised if the vehicle speeds are in excess of 45 miles per hour in that location, but as has been pointed out, that information isn't in the report, speed checks haven't been undertaken there, and maybe that's something that you might want to consider, that those speed checks with radar gun equipment perhaps should be undertaken, because it seems that the safety in blind bends and the visibility and the stopping distances when it's wet weather as well, are paramount in everybody's considerations. The volume of traffic from 22 houses in the peak periods would be negligible, maybe 14 vehicles in the peak period two-way. So the development itself isn't going to impact on adversely on congestion on the local highway network. The cumulative impacts wouldn't be severe from this development proposal, and MPPF requires us to measure it in that way. I think some of the issues are some of the unknowns really, we don't know the volume of material that might need to be exported or excavated, and there are concerns about construction method statements and where a contractor's going to park and where a material's going to be delivered, because it's quite a slope. There are conditions within the report that ask for that detail to be submitted for approval. Certainly, we wouldn't be approving any temporary traffic management arrangements that led to contractors parking on Manchester Road. All materials would need to be delivered within the curtilage of the development site, and all parking associated with contractors would have to be contained within the development site, and that might mean constructing sacrificial hardcore standing areas for contractors to park within the development site. I'm happy to take further questions.
So from what I understand from those last two points, is that the first, if we were to grant permission, the first thing that a developer would have to do is clear a space within the site for parking before any other operations could be undertaken. And the other thing you raised was the speed checks, is that something, Victoria could probably answer, is that something we would have to ask for, like as an additional condition?
If you were going to put an additional condition on it, then that would mean you'd be granting permission, subject to that condition being complied with. I'm not sure that was the point, that that wasn't the point. Anyway, just do you want to clarify?
Sorry, sorry for the confusion. Yeah, I think it's a fundamental principle that we know the speed of traffic on the road to ensure that the correct visibility display is achieved. So conditioning, speed checks to be undertaken after the granting of planning permission. If you can't achieve that visibility display because of this blind bend and the volume of traffic, then it would be inappropriate to grant planning permission today, you'd probably have to defer it until the speed checks have been undertaken.
Thank you for that. Members clear on that point? Okay, I'm gonna, I've got, I've got two, sorry, do you want to come back at all on what's been said so far, Sarah? No. So go to members' questions now, and I've got Nikki and then Tony, so if there's any others that want to speak. Oh, yeah, thank you, Brian. Nikki, over to you.
Thank you, Chair. The key thing for me does seem to be around highways issues, and it's been interesting to learn about visibility displays and how they're calculated. Are they, the calculations that are given in the report, are they suggestions or are we legally bound to adhere to them?
Through the chair, they're national standards, they're not negotiable, those are the distances for, the speed of the traffic that's in the report, so that's fixed.
Sorry, just to follow up then, so what kind of factors, variables could change them, because obviously, I assume there's a range?
There is, it's the stopping site distance for different speeds of traffic, so in my report, I'd assumed that the 59 metres equates to a vehicle speed of 37 miles per hour, and I felt that we were comfortably within the, for a visibility display of 70 metres, we would be comfortably in that safe zone, but I mean, I think it's a case of, is it 37 miles per hour, was it 40 or is it 45, because that would dictate the distance, the ex, it's called an ex-distance.
Can I ask one more, is that all right? Thank you. And to be in that safe range or zone, could things that were raised as concerns by residents, such as like flooding or excess water coming down, I know people think there's a lot of sort of excess water seems to come down the hill anyway, so things like that, whether it's a light vehicle, a heavy goods vehicle, all of these, the conditions, you know, all of these things, are they within that, are they taken account of within the calculation for that safe zone or could they push it past that?
The standards, there are two columns, one for wet surfaces and one for dry surfaces, so weather is taken into account. I'm not aware that the sizes of the vehicles come into it, I think that stopping distances, vehicles have to be designed to brake at the right weight, so I'm assuming articulated lorry's braking system, the speed that it's travelling at is designed to stop, same as a car.
Right, thank you.
Tony. Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thank you for the people that's been speaking for and against. I've got a couple of questions, well, three questions actually. The first one is concerned the water runoff from the natural spring that's there. What mitigations are put in place to accommodate that? Because I can imagine in wet weather, you know, that can be very nasty and turn icy, so what mitigations are there in place to deal with the natural spring and the water runoff from that site?
So I think the reference to the natural spring is through neighbour representation, but I don't think our drainage team have got the records of that. I'm not saying there's not some water on the site, but we've not got the records for that. So the application, just as a reminder, is outlined, so we don't know what the drainage strategy is at the moment, we don't know how the site will be developed in its entirety, so we don't have a drainage strategy, but what we do have is conditions requiring details of a drainage strategy. And our drainage engineer has confirmed to me that there would be a drainage solution for the site. It may be a fairly expensive solution, depending on the amount of excavation that's involved, but he was confident that there would be a solution which could be achieved, which would address all the issues, including groundwater, any potential springs, surface water flooding, he felt that there would be a solution, but we don't know what that is yet. And that is okay, it's not an unusual situation to be in, and it would be subject for future approval by conditions and potentially through the reserve matters application.
Yeah, my second question is concerns about the unstable ground there. I know the reading through the report that the Coal Authority have said that they're more or less happy with the situation, but one objective raised the point in his speech about the unstable ground there due to coal mine workings under there, can you clarify that for me, please?
Yeah, so there is evidence that the site has previously had coal mining activity on it, and the applicant is aware of that and has highlighted that as part of their supporting submissions. The Coal Authority have been consulted as part of the application and they have not raised any objections, they have suggested conditions to further understand what coal mining history is associated with the site and how that would be mitigated. So we've got conditions requiring further survey data and further information of mitigation and remedial works to address anything that is found on the site. to address anything that is found on the site.
And finally, Chair, it's back to highways. And I wondered why no, one of the objectors raised the point that no traffic assessments had been made. And I wonder, sorry, yeah, I wonder why that was. And also, while I'm on the point of highways, we're talking about having a look at it with a speed gun. Now, we all know that whenever there's someone stood there with a speed gun, people will slow down because they're wearing yellow vests and everything like that. And as soon as they've gone past that, they up the speed again. Or as soon as there's another one there, they up the speed again. So there's going to have to be some kind of traffic calming measures put in there, I would have thought, to slow the traffic down on this busy Manchester Road.
I think the problem with traffic calming measures, I think the only calming measures that you could put in here would be road markings and dragon's teeth markings that you see sometimes. Vertical deflection pumps and cushions on a classified road like this with a lot of HGV vehicles would cause a lot of vibration and noise just because of the volume of traffic using Manchester Road. And I'm not sure that road markings and different colours in the road sometimes do the job. For the laws development, I think they did provide a, tried to provide a bit of a gateway on the south of where the speed limit changes by putting in a pedestrian refuge and some gateway signing with the new vehicle speed. So certainly that can be looked into. I think we would, I mean, this would require a legal agreement, a section two seven eight legal agreement, they're called, to deliver the highway works. And within that, you undertake all kinds of road safety audits. And audit teams can recommend various measures to try and improve safety if they feel there is a safety problem. And the developer is legally obliged to provide those. So that's something that can be looked at, definitely. I missed your first point, sorry.
Yeah, about the assessments, one of the objectors raised the point that no traffic assessments have been made on this particular stretch.
Yeah, I mean, I think it was remiss perhaps not having the speed checks. And that's something that we can, and I don't, there might be different methods of undertaking speed surveys. I'm not familiar, I'm sure that can be looked into as well. But the trigger for transport assessments, full-blown transport assessments, is when you have eighty dwellings or more, and this is well below the, below that trigger at just twenty-two dwellings. So it didn't require, and that's a national benchmark as well. So it didn't require a full-blown transport assessment as such, or transport statements even. But certainly, I don't see why speed checks, speed assessments couldn't, we can look into that potentially.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Tony. Brian.
Hi there. Three, hopefully quick, I'll try and get on with it. So what drivers are confronted with as they travel along what is a pretty fast-moving Manchester Road on the whole is a lot of information which is coming in at one point. And it's going to be difficult to process all this, particularly with another, with two new entrances, one on one side of the road, one on the other, and one for blurs, one for this one, if it gets passed. So, and then you've got a change in, so you're entering deep cars, you hit that point exactly where the access is meant to be. And you've also got a change in speed at that point as well. So I think there's just lots of information coming in, which I'm worried about. And you'll have cars slowing down.
Brian, is this a question? Because we're at the questions phase.
So how can that be coped with? As a regular driver along that route, you know, which I have been, how can that be coped with? How do people process all that information coming in at once? And then if there are other traffic calming measures which have been raised as well, that as well. So that's to the Highway Office, so that's question one, if you want to answer that now.
Chair, the stagger distances between the two side roads are perfectly acceptable. Forty-five metres tends to be the minimum stagger. It's a lot, it's a straight road. I mean, there's this bend, but generally speaking, it's a straight road with time to assimilate information. I think you'd be surprised how quickly we do assimilate information. Traffic signs, as long as they're not masking each other, they can be read and they can be interpreted. As I say, the visibility display, that's a derivative of the speed of traffic on the road. So once we know that, we know what the visibility display needs to be.
Just to clarify what you've said in answer to Brian, that you've got a straight stretch of road where these signs come up warning people to slow down and then they get to that blind bend, at which time they should be, they should have brought their speed down to a level so that they can brake when necessary.
That's right, Chair. I'm not entirely sure exactly where the national speed limit changes from being a national speed limit as you're driving north. But it's south of the bend.
Yeah, it's south of the bend. I noticed it was very close to where the deep car sign is, says you're entering deep car. It's right by that. So question number two. So I wondered how residents are meant to get their cars in and out and how construction traffic is going to be able to come off Manchester Road? Because at that point, you're then hit by a very steep slope. So I cannot understand how you're able to get the traffic off it. I looked very closely when we stopped in the minibus, it was quite dangerous doing that in itself, to examine what's the gate entrance and which will be the main entrance. So as you reach that point as construction traffic or as a driver, then you're hit by a very steep slope. So you're going, you're almost going straight up at that point. So I can't see how, you'd have to take quite a bend round. On the plans that are shown indicatively here, it goes up straight from the road. And I don't see how that's possible. It would certainly slow any car down considerably coming off the road. So that's my second question. How is construction traffic going to be able to in at any number with the lumbering great beasts that there are?
Through the Chair, yeah, there is this construction method statement and details of how construction traffic will ingress and egress the site. And I think there's going to have to be some re-profiling works in the immediate vicinity of that junction to enable vehicles not to be confronted with an immediate steep gradient. One of the suggested conditions was a gradient of one in twelve, maximum not to be exceeded. I think once you've turned into the site, the bulk of the internal road actually works with the gradient, runs with the gradient. It's that initial turning that I think the levels are going to have to be re-engineered somehow. But we haven't got that level of detail at the moment. And I guess if planning permission is ever granted, then that will give the incentive for that to be explored.
A very final question, so thank you for that, a very final question, which is, so we've got a lot of people from the local area who are asking about this. So how can we ensure that people are heard if this goes forward? So that they have their voices can be heard with the developer? Because they haven't up to now, and that's been very clear from what people have said.
I think that's one for Sarah to pick up on.
It's my turn. So as part of any, there will be another application submitted if it got approved today or whenever. Then we would, there would be a reserve matters application or multiple reserve matters applications because they can come in for different reserve matters. And as part of that, we would consult neighbours and we would require, and they could comment on that at that point.
There is, there's no statutory way that that has to happen through the developer, is that right?
We can't make the developer discuss it with the neighbours before submitting an application, I think is what you're asking.
I think the next person I've got is Nigat, have questions?
Yeah, I think something has been already raised, the stability of the site, you've answered. I just wanted to ask, you know, with quite a few issues and concerns mentioned and also highlighted today by the objectors, has this actually been considered and referred back to the Sheffield Local Plan? Because there's few statements made here, like you mentioned in the presentation, I think, it's a grazing land. And there's a statement here that outlines new development should take place mainly on previously developed land, not on undeveloped grazing land. And then also the development site is not allocated for housing in the new draft Sheffield Plan. That's by, from the South Yorkshire Back Protection Group raising some of those concerns. I know you've mentioned that they've actually took some of their concerns after reviewing and looking at the site. But that's something separately stated there. So I just wanted clarification, how well has the, when going through the application, it's been referred back to the local plan, making sure that we're protecting the green spaces and not actually just using it? Because yes, we do need the homes and houses being built and everything. We're trying to protect as much as we can of the green spaces.
Okay, so the officer report, there's the policy section which sort of assesses the application against the current local plan, which is the Unitary Development Plan and the Core Strategy. And as part of that, it considers that the site is within a housing area. So it's kind of washed over by this housing designation, which is slightly different to it being allocated as housing, which I'll come on to. And it's been assessed the fact that it is a greenfield site, so it's not previously developed land. And it's been assessed against our policies that relate to greenfield sites. So our policy states that priority should be given to developing brownfield sites first and that no more than 12% of housing development should be on greenfield sites. And our current figure, which was actually for last year, is that only 7% of sites have been, 7% of housing development has been built on greenfield sites. So it wouldn't conflict with that policy. And the policy also states that small sustainably located greenfield sites should be given priority if we are building on greenfield sites. So yes, we have assessed it in relation to the local plan. In relation to the draft local plan, which I think is perhaps what you're referring to as well, the site isn't allocated as a housing site. So there are some sites which are allocated as housing sites and this is not one of them. This is allocated as a urban green space. And the draft local plan has very limited weight at the moment. So the amount of weight that we can give to that allocation is very limited, especially given that the local plan, we've not got a five-year, four-year housing land supply as well. So the tilt of balance is in play. But we have noted that it is within that urban green space.
So you're saying that once we do have the local plan agreed, then we would be in a stronger position to turn down development on greenfield sites? In the hope that we would get more development on brownfield sites?
Not quite, because this plan doesn't refer, it's not about greenfield or brownfield development. It's about development in these urban green space zones, which are areas which are open spaces or, you know, greenfield value for their amenity value. So it's not about previously developed land or greenfield sites in that respect. If the local plan, if the draft local plan was at a more advanced stage or indeed was adopted, then we would assess the application against the local, that policy at that stage. If it was in conflict with the policy relating to urban green spaces, then of course we would assess it in that way and give weight to that policy and move forward in that direction. But we're not really there at the moment. So it's not as clear as just saying it would conflict with that policy because we'd have to assess it against that policy in detail.
Thank you for clarifying that, Sarah. I've got Richard, then Gary, and then Brian, coming back for a second bite, so, Richard.
Thank you, Chair. All four people who spoke against this application mentioned the issue of road safety and the issues with traffic. And it's very sincere what you were saying. On at least two occasions, I counted, the highways officer indicated that he thought maybe with hindsight, there should have been some form of traffic assessment carried out. I think he used the word remiss at one stage. I would therefore like to make a proposal that we defer this item for an appropriate traffic assessment to be carried out. It's so fundamentally important to whether this goes ahead or not.
Can I get some advice from Victoria first, please?
Thank you, Chair. I think one possibility for members is to defer and ask the planning officer to liaise with the developer regarding highway safety information. From what's been said on the floor, I think it may be a reasonable interpretation to say that members may feel that they don't have enough information on which to base a decision regarding highway safety. So a deferral asking the officer to liaise the developer about any, whether any further information could be brought forward to assist them. That would be my suggestion, just can, ask the planning officer to clarify if that's acceptable.
So that is one option. And the other option would be a refusal on insufficient information on highways' safety.
Richard, do you want to proceed with your proposal?
I would like to ask Victoria, is that sufficient to get over the issue of the tilted balance? Because I know that you frequently remind us of that.
I'm conscious that the highways officer wants to join in. But obviously, if members have got concerns about highway safety, that is in the NPPF there. Say, from what I hear on the floor is that, you know, the reasons for refusal, as the planning officer stated, is that a lack of information to enable you to make, to decide whether there's a highway safety implication. So obviously, highway safety is something that can overcome the tilted balance. Here, you haven't, you know, you would be saying you haven't got information to enable you to fully make that judgment. Hence why a deferral is another option in which to try and ascertain the evidence. And I'll ask the highway officer to join in, if that's okay with yourself, Chair.
Yes, that's fine.
Chair, I was just going to say that the assessment is essentially just a speed check on Manchester Road. And if that speed check shows that the speeds are below everybody's expectations and the visibility display seventy metres is sufficient, then refusing it on those grounds, maybe a deferral seems more reasonable. I'm not sure, I'd leave that to planning and the legal people. I think the assessment is essentially a speed check. And it's either going to satisfy the visibility requirement or it isn't. And if it does, if the visibility requirement is satisfied, then it's a refusal over the top, that's my query.
Just a question for Victoria. The developers can't, clearly can't appeal against the deferment. But they could appeal against the refusal regardless of reasons, if they felt they wanted to.
And obviously, in terms of a potential refusal, any applicant can appeal that, and that's fine. In terms of a deferment, there isn't a process within the planning act to enable them to, you know, challenge that. Obviously, there's other sort of public law remedies that they could utilise, but why not, you know, wait for the item to come back? And with the information that members feel they need in order to, you know, accept or refuse on a substantive basis as opposed to a lack of information would be my thoughts on that. I just could see that the planning officer wants to join in, thank you.
I think it might just be worth thinking about the scheme as a wider scheme as well. So if the only issue that officers, that we're raising is highway safety, then a deferral would seem appropriate. However, if there are other reasons, that other concerns, which I'm not sure we've got to yet, we seem to be focused on highways, but that may be that that's because that's the main issue. Then maybe we're looking at an alternative recommendation. If, you know, if it's highways and something else, then I guess an insufficient reason would be appropriate in that respect. And otherwise, a deferral perhaps seems more appropriate.
Can I suggest at this stage we just park the highways to one side to see if there's any more issues that need teasing out that may also require a deferral? And then we can come back if there aren't or we can come back with deferral plus something else. Is that acceptable, Richard? Victoria?
Thank you Chair, my screen's hopefully gone off. But I think we've also had a brief discussion earlier about the emerging plan and what that says. In terms of how much weight to give to an emerging plan, there is a paragraph in the NPPF that advises us on how much weight to give those policies. And one of those matters is how much objection there has been to that policy. I don't think that's something that planning officers have currently got in front of them. So, yeah, there is a little bit of information there that members may also find would be helpful as well. Thank you Chair.
Yeah, Victoria's right, we don't have the information about how much objection there has been to that policy in front of us, but we, our policy team would have that information available, which would perhaps allow us to consider how much weight we could give to that policy a little bit more.
Okay, so with that in mind, do we want to go with those two or is there anything else that people want to raise at this stage?
Sorry Chair, yeah, and if you could go to the slide that shows the aerial picture? No, yeah. That's the one. Are you able to indicate very quickly where the new block development is? Because I'm not familiar with that.
It's the other side of the road.
Yeah, so it's basically that whole plateau, Julie's going to point us out. Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. I mean, it strikes me that that piece of green space is critically important to the community. And more with that imagining with the broad development being completed. Now I don't know how that, that has to be some form of planning reason possibly with the reference to the to the new plan coming down the track, taking your point. So maybe, I wouldn't want to miss that opportunity if we defer or even refuse.
Sarah?
Good question. So in terms of the green space and its protection, I think you're asking me if we can protect it as part of the new policy? I suppose, is that the question or as part of the existing policies? Okay, so as part of the existing policies, in terms of it's part of, it's allocated as housing. We've talked about our development completions on greenfield sites. So in terms of protecting it as a green space, given that it's not publicly access, it's not, doesn't serve a public open space function. So in terms of NPPF and open space, it wouldn't meet the NPPF definition because it doesn't function as an open space. So I struggle to see that a substantiated refusal under the current policies, given that it's housing site, sorry, in a housing area, it's not, doesn't function as an open space. And in terms of greenfield dwelling completions, we are meeting our completions on previously developed land. In terms of the new policy, again, the amount of weight we can give to that, as Victoria's suggested, is perhaps something we could give further consideration to. And perhaps give further consideration as to how, you know, that would sit within in this policy about urban green space zones. There is something within the policy about safeguarding green spaces of high amenity value. And I suppose if amenity value could be how the public perceive it as well as its quality. So if we think we can give that some weight, then perhaps it would be able to be protected if we can give it weight, if that makes sense.
Okay, I've got Gary next.
Thanks Chair, it's mainly on highways Chair, I apologise. But it's, when we, I asked the driver if he could pull up where the entrance was on Manchester Road. These are all for you Mark, sorry to say. And I was looking at the sightline and the sightline to that band bend and now I've just found out it's 70 metres, which I think is, not as long as that myself, but I've been out of your wheel. And it threw me back right to when we were parish council chair with Ecclesfield Parish Council. And the smart motorway were coming in and we all objected to it on lots of grounds. And now they're turning around on that now. And I just saw this as an accident waiting to happen, this particular site. Because, you know, the speed of the traffic, it's all like you're saying, it's 40 mile an hour outside. So they're going to be doing 40 mile an hour, they're going to be on that, whoever's turning up and it's going to be, you're not just going to be going and driving into a site, you're going to be driving up and down to that site. So my question is, what is it from that bend to that? I know you've said already about 37 mile an hour, 40 mile an hour metres. But what is it, you know, in a wet condition? And you're doing 40 miles an hour, would you stop in 70 metres?
I think you would, yes. Given the dimensions I gave, 59 metres equates to 37 miles per hour. But I haven't got the full table of speeds and distances in front of me, I'm afraid. But if this is to be deferred, then we could ask, I mean, as I mentioned earlier, the 278 legal agreement securing the highway works, excuse me, would require an independent road safety audit, stages one, two, three and four. So it wouldn't be unreasonable to ask for, within the extra information that we're requiring, for an independent road safety audit to be, a stage one road safety audit to be undertaken. Which is to include obviously the speed checks to make sure that the distances for the visibility are adhered to.
I'm conscious that with the highways issue has had a lot of time. Richard has put a proposal on the table for deferral. And I think the direction of Gary's questioning also points to that. And the other thing was the green space and how much weight that is accorded. Are we, is there really anything else that people would want to add to that at this stage?
That's all right, about the deferral. If we're talking about deferring, what, is that all right?
Sorry, Brian was actually next on, sorry.
And the reason I'm putting my hand up again is because it's specifically on the amenity aspect, which was being raised by Richard, but it was also mentioned by Nigat earlier as well. So there is, there is what, there is a notice on the site visit that there's a perimeter footpath that is used and it seems regularly used by dog walkers. So that's another aspect of amenity which needs to be considered maybe, if amenity is going to be brought up. So that's what I just wanted to flag up.
Which ties in with the use of green space, so is there anything in addition to those two?
Sorry Chair, can I just respond to that? It's, that is only an informal path, it's not a public right of way, so it wouldn't be protected.
It was originally a public right of way because we found the signpost.
We found our post, didn't we, but it didn't have any signs on it. And our records show that it's not a public right of way.
Even though we know it's well used and at this time of year it's very good for blackberry picking too. Nicky, did you want to add anything to what's, okay, and then Mark, thank you Nicky.
Just the deferral business. If we're talking about deferring a decision because of the traffic situation, couldn't we first of all make a decision about whether the proposal is likely to be approved or not approved? Because if it's not, if it's going to be turned down anyway, then there's no point deferring a decision. A decision, a deferral could be made after a decision has been made that it was going forward.
One for Vicky here, but I don't think that it works quite like that, Mark.
Yeah, I think the reason why members appear to be considering a deferral is because they may feel that they don't have enough information on which to base a decision. So in that vein, it would, it would seem somewhat premature to almost make a decision that you could make a decision, but you're not going to make a decision because you're not going to have information to base it on. So I think it's difficult, isn't it? I think what potentially you might be trying to get at is that it would maybe be reasonable if members want to put forward a proposal to defer, to enable further highway safety information to be gathered and further information about the emerging local plan weight, then it would be an indication that they are the two issues that you feel may be potentially based reasons for refusal. Because obviously it wouldn't be reasonable to defer for those two reasons today, only to then come back to committee and say, aha, we're going to refuse for drainage, because you're then obviously putting the applicant, these additional, you know, sort of delays, unreasonable delays, only to then potentially, you know, refuse for a different reason. So I think that may be that what you're saying now is that, you know, members should bear in mind, if they're minded to pursue a deferral, then you should be, you know, bear in mind, you shouldn't be harboring any sort of, it wouldn't necessarily be reasonable to sort of hold sort of reasons for refusal, you know, to one side at the moment. I think that may be the point that you perhaps tried to get to.
I think we're getting there, I'm just conscious that, looking back over the issues we've discussed, one that was raised certainly by Julie and one of the other speakers, was to do with the decline in available public transport in the area. And I just wonder whether that has any bearing that ought to be considered while we're looking at deferral. Because what I don't want to do is then come back and everybody saying, well, they haven't got any public transport round here and.
Yeah, I suppose the site is part of an existing urban area which benefits or doesn't, from the same public transport that's already on offer. So it's not like we're putting housing somewhere that's completely, you know, on a limb and not linked to an existing urban area. There's obviously schools, shops, doctor surgeries within that local area that could be walked to as well. So I don't think it would be reasonable to substantiate a refusal on the sustainability of, or lack of, of public transport.
So it brings us back to the two points that have been raised, the highways and the and the amenity of the green space. So, Richard, do you have a proposal on the table today?
Yeah, I basically would be happy to change my proposal to take into the two items that Victoria mentioned, the highways and the potential future plan.
Yeah. Okay, are we all right to move to a vote on that, Victoria?
Yeah, you've got a proposal and a second of that for a deferral for those two reasons, thank you Chair.
Right, so I'll go to Nigat first.
I'm going with the defer.
I support deferment.
Mark?
I'll support the deferral.
Agree to defer.
I support the deferment.
Marianne?
Support the deferral.
Gary?
Yes, I'll support it Chair.
Alan?
Yeah, I'll support it.
Dennis?
I'll support deferrals.
Richard?
Yeah, I'll support that.
And Andy?
I'll support the deferral.
That position is carried unanimously. This will come back to a future meeting of the Planning and Highways Committee, those two issues to discuss. Okay, thank you members for that one. We move on to Record of Planning Appeal Submissions and Decisions, item eight. On page 117.
Nothing to add to the agenda Chair. You'll notice we've received 19 new appeals, but just to point out that 13 of those are all related to new advertising panels on bus shelters. They all came in as applications in one go and a number of them were refused, which is why it looks like we've had, well, we have received an awful lot of appeals.
Any comments from members on that? Happy to note, yeah. Thank you members. And lastly, item nine, date of next meeting. Committee will be held on the 17th of September at 2pm. Thank you all very much for your attendance.